Good evening and welcome to the May 7, 2019 City Council Study Session. We have three items on the agenda tonight, one having to do with the Senior Citizen Center, one is a discussion regarding the creation of the Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee, and one is a discussion of the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments' Surface Transportation Bond Grant Program for the Oklahoma City urbanized area. So we're going to start with the Senior Citizen Center. This was the meeting that we were going to have last week, and it got rained out. So during this segment, after we've had the presentation and Council has had an opportunity to ask some questions, then we will take comments from the audience at that time about the Senior Citizen section. So with that, I will call Judd up to the -- there you are, already up to the front. You moved quickly to do the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This will be a summary of information that you have all seen before. It has been updated somewhat since the last time we talked, but we have looked at, over the last several years, have looked at several site options for standalone senior center location. And the first one, I'm going to try to go through these pretty quickly if I can, because I know you've seen this information before, but we looked at four different site options, generally west of the new Central Library. Pros and cons of those, all these options, the positive things were its central location and its accessibility and being adjacent to the library. I should put on there Andrews Park also. And on the negative side, this site option costs a little bit more, $1 million to $1.5 million probably in land acquisition for the, some of the residential structures that are currently west of the library. And when we talked to Council before about this, we indicated that, at one point, we had talked with some of the landowners and they did not, they were not interested in selling their property, which would mean condemnation of these sites, and that's never a popular thing for the Council to do, and so the direction we got was that that was not a favorable option. It would also obviously result in loss of some residential housing, and it would be limited space for any future expansion. This is one of the four site options. Actually, it was the one that got the most interest, and then we ended up tweaking it a little bit before we finally kind of abandoned it. But the Central Library is the, whatever color that is, salmon color or whatever it is, on the east side, the light blue is the arbitrary shape or footprint of a building for a senior center. And you can see there would be some parking to the west of it and shared parking to the north of the senior center and virtually no room to expand it anywhere. But that's representative of those four options. Then we looked at Andrews Park. We own the land. Obviously, there's no additional land cost to purchase, acquire land, I should say. So relocated next to the library and obviously the park facilities. Higher site development costs at Andrews because of the drainage issues, estimated to be about $1 million worth of drainage improvements, underground drainage improvements. We would have to go through FEMA and have a, go through a LOMER, I should say, with FEMA or a map revision, because some of the area we would be using is already indicated in the 100-year floodplain on the FEMA maps, and we'd have to go through a process. That's about a year to go through that process, so extra time and extra money are some of the negative parts about this option. Another one that's kind of resurfaced also, or surfaced more prominently, since we relocated James Garner Avenue to the west and we had to relocate the skate park and lost some of that open space, there's been some pushback. We've heard complaints from some people about loss of that open space, and you'll see in a second how a new facility would take quite a bit more of the open space away, and I think that would be extremely difficult in terms of the citizens and giving up that open space. There's a shaded area, a little over two acres that we had looked at. There's also the floodplain lines were on that map. This map is turned sideways so that the railroad tracks are along the bottom, north is to the right. This shows the new alignment of James Garner, an arbitrary footprint of a building and about 100, a little over 100 parking spaces. You can see how much space it would take up out of the park. Another option was North Base. At this location, we had talked about actually three facilities, the indoor aquatic facility, indoor multisport facility, and the senior center. It's considered to be a central location. That was a positive. Thought that if all three facilities were built there, we might be able to share and not duplicate costs of certain facilities, like an extra pool or gym particularly. And those were considered, with all three there, to be a positive thing by some. And then on the negative side, pretty expensive land there. We had talked about a 14-acre site that broke down to approximately $172,000 an acre, and so if we just did a senior center on two and a half to three acres, looking at around $500,000, plus or minus. In addition to that, we would be required to do road improvements in the area. The roads are all substandard. University wants us to extend some roads. Berry Road was one extension, and so we're looking at a million or more for road improvements on the North Base area. Another thing that surfaced, you may recall, was some people, when we started talking about all three facilities there and having to remove the Optimus Gym, some people didn't like that. They wanted the gym to remain, and I'm sure you've heard from those folks. So that would be an issue for some. And again, now if we're back to just the senior center there, it's thought that that would be kind of an isolated site, with the exception of the Y, there's nothing else out there, and that's an obvious duplicated service, and so it would be considered kind of out there by itself. And another thing that has come up is the speed of the traffic along Flood in that area is relatively fast and was considered to be a negative entering an accident off of 12th Avenue. Or I'm sorry, Flood. If I said 12th, I meant Flood, North Flood.
Councilmember Clark.
Have we confirmed with the University of Oklahoma that they would sell us only the portion that we need, should we want to locate the senior center?
We have, and they would. Yes. So this is the shaded area here is the 14-acre site we had talked about previously for all three. You can see the location where that lies, just east of the YMCA facility. Then we move on to U N P. The University of North Park site became available for any or all of these facilities, all three facilities. It's difficult to just talk about one of these projects, they're all kind of interrelated. The possible locations for the pool and gym I mentioned, reduced cost is possible for, there are two sites that we're looking at, at U N P. It's quite possible that we can acquire one or both, either one of those, I should say, for a reduced cost. I think we're still working on what that cost would be. But, and then most of the infrastructure improvements are already in place in those locations. On the negative side, the traffic congestion on 24th was thought to be an issue, particularly by the senior group, the Norman Senior Association. It's considered to be not centrally located in the city and might require an extension of Rock Creek Road to the east, depending on how things laid out, which would be pretty expensive to do. And then you may recall in a joint study session we had in here, a few months, a couple months ago, the Norman Senior Association went on record basically objecting or rejecting this site or an objection to this option. This is the north part, I'm calling it the north site. At the very bottom of the picture would be Rock Creek Road extended, just to the left side of the picture is 24th Avenue, and then the yellow shaded area represents two five-acre lots or 10 acres that we would consider as one of those two options. The other one is just south of that. You can see Rock Creek Road towards the top of the picture here, 24th on the left. Embassy Suites Hotel is at the bottom of the picture. And the outline area in red is 14 acres, 17 acres, roughly, that not necessarily all of that would be needed, but that's the general area that the other, the second option would be somewhere in that area. Another one we looked at was Ruby Grant Park. Obviously, land is available, no additional purchase cost there, lower site development costs at Ruby Grant than at Andrews or the library sites, and there's plenty of room for expansion in the future if we ever wanted to or needed to. On the negative side, it was, the main issue was it's considered to be not centrally located, too far northwest from majority of the senior population, which is, which is known to be kind of south-central, central-south-central Norman area. And another one that would have to be addressed at Ruby Grant too, it's not currently on a public transportation line, so that was going to be, potentially going to be an issue there. This is out of the plan set for the Ruby Grant Park, and the area we're looking at, I don't know if I can get my, here it is, is down in this southwest corner area, somewhere in this area is where we were proposing site location could be. Then we get to Reeves Park. Again, we own the site, no additional land cost at Reeves. There's room for future expansion if we chose to do that. Lower site costs and development costs than Andrews and library. It's a central location in Norman, fits into the Reeves Park, the adopted Reeves Park plan. I've got a picture of that here in a minute. And then we've worked, since we met last, we've worked with the Medieval Fair staff. They are comfortable with the location of this facility at Reeves Park in terms of what they need and can do in the future for the Medieval Fair. So some additional positive things about Reeves, possible land expansion south of the existing border where Constitution Street is, if we can realign Constitution intersection with Imhoff, and I'll show you a sketch of that here in a second. We recently met, our staff, some of our city staff recently met with people at OU to discuss this. They are interested, while there's nothing nailed down or for certain, they definitely are interested in pursuing the realignment of these two intersections, they like that idea. We also saw a sketch, very preliminary, but a sketch of the location for the OU softball complex, and I'll point to that in a second, but where we saw it in a preliminary sketch would make this intersection realignment work or still allow it to work. The senior ad hoc group has reviewed this and voted to recommend this site to you. The Reeves Park ad hoc group has voted the same, and the Norman Senior Association has voted two different times now to recommend this site as their recommended site to you. On the negative side, it would mean the loss of the existing Reeves Center building, the small building at the southwest corner. It isn't used very often, but it would still be changed to a new building. Here is an aerial of a larger area, kind of in the center is Jenkins, going north and south. There's the OU softball park over here on the west side of Jenkins. This is Constitution on the south side of Reeves. The blue rectangle represents the area we're looking at for a senior center site. And another drawing, this is the--
Okay, Judd, we've got several questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Wilson.
On the Reeves Park site, I just am curious about the realignment of the Imhoff and would we, or Constitution, I'm sorry. Would we need to wait to start construction for those to be realigned? Okay.
No, and I've got another sketch here, and a slide or two, I'll show you that.
Okay. Then I'll hush.
Councilmember Clark.
What is that building?
For at this time?
The Reeves Center? It's occasionally rented, very, actually very seldom it's rented, and we use it for maybe a luncheon or something for city staff or occasionally, once or twice a year, but it's not used very often right now.
When was it built?
Great question. It was, Andy Rieger has written about it as a teen center a long time ago. I can't tell you what year it was built, I don't remember that, but probably in the 60s, I'm guessing.
Okay.
Councilmember Hitman.
My question's actually on the next slide.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the adopted master plan for Reeves. The building we're talking about, the existing building is shown on this drawing right here, and we've shown some enhancement to that in the overall master plan. The next one is kind of a, just to zoom in, if you will, on that southwest corner. So behind the sketch, you can see the existing building we were just talking about. This is an arbitrary footprint of a building that might be the senior center and an arbitrary parking shape, just to show approximately where we're talking about on the site and that it would work in the master plan without, without changing the master plan much at all. This is the intersection realignment. Again, this is a very basic sketch. It's been going around with the engineering group at OU, I think, for some time now, but so up here is Constitution where it is today and Jenkins. You can see the idea is that Constitution would swing down south. Imhoff is down here and currently goes to this T-intersection. Jenkins would swing up to the north and form one intersection instead of two. And again, we looked at this with the university, they're interested in pursuing that. And then the OU softball complex sketch that we saw shows their new facility located right in here, right? Just west of where the current Constitution intersection is. So if that's where it sat, it would allow this realignment.
Okay, Councilmember Hitman has a question about the--
If you can go back to the prior slide, Judd. So looking at this slide where you have the graphic showing where the proposed senior center and parking would go, one of the pros was room for future expansion. Where would the future expansion be?
It could be, there you go, it could be up this direction. Preferably, we would want to realign the intersection, set this up where we would expand it south. That would be the best case scenario.
So if the expansion did go north though, wouldn't that negatively impact the Medieval Fair and the green space that they--
It would have more of an effect. I think the answer to that would depend on how far, how much space we took, but yeah, that would be a concern for sure. I understand too, this is all very arbitrary, this all can be reshaped. What you see here is very basic, but it could be reshaped to allow more space for building.
I mean, isn't it fair to say that the most likely opportunity for relocation is going to be if the realignment occurs, and if that doesn't occur, there's likely not going to be space for expansion?
I'm not sure I would say that. I think there, it could be set up so that we could expand it somewhat, and I'm not sure, I wouldn't say we could double it, but I think we would, we could set it up to expand it some.
Without impacting the Medieval, because my understanding from the Medieval Fair folks is that the schematic that's shown there just barely works, but if it is, the footprint is expanded and made larger, it would impact where they would have, impact their vendors and therefore impact their financial sustainability. So that's my concern about expanding it north.
Yeah, I understand. And again, I think, I think we could take from everywhere south of this walkway you see here and reshape this, this whole corner such that we could put a bit, larger building footprint in there and parking. It would, it would take some work, but yeah, we would try to stay out of going any further north than what you see there, because we don't want to have a negative impact on the fair or any other activities that are out there. But another comment too, if I may, about that, that we've heard recently, maybe too soon for this kind of a conversation, but, but one comment that's come out, and we've heard several times, is maybe this is the first of two senior centers, and these, and a second one, rather than expansion, a second was built maybe at Ruby Grant or some other site on the west side, somewhere down the line. Don't know, you know, again, that's pretty premature, but it's something to keep in mind as an option for expansion of senior facilities.
And one of my other questions is, on this slide here, the schematic, if you will, knowing that there is going to be roadwork on both Jenkins and Constitution at this intersection, and my recollection is that the roadway is going to be larger because of that, those projects, and we take into account what impact that might have on this design and where, you know, and if that's going to go into the park area, you know, for example, if the, if we take another 15, 20 feet and that can, you know, on the left-hand side of your slide there along Jenkins, what effect does that have? Because this appears to me to be a pretty tight fit with what's being mocked up here. I just want people, I just think it's important that we make an informed decision and we, there are a lot of moving parts at this location because of these road projects, you know, and, you know, the Medieval Fair and all the things that we already have down there at Reeves Park. And I'm just wondering if we have taken a look at the potential impact of these road projects, because my understanding that, you know, is that, you know, there's going to be construction going on down there, not only on the park but on the road and, starting in 2021, 2022, 23. I mean, there'll be road construction going on probably through 2025 between those two intersections, and I'm just wondering if we've taken that into account in any of our conversations and in this design.
Well, in the design, not necessarily, I mean, there's just, I'm guessing there's probably 50 feet or more between the edge of this parking area that's shown and Jenkins. I'd have to defer to Shaun how much, how many, if it's, if it's one more lane wide and towards the east or not, but so, yeah, it would be tight if it moves over. Not saying it would kill it though, I think it could be done.
And have we looked at whether or not the road that looks to be the single entry point where you'd go into the park area, then turn left into the parking lot and go on into the ballfields? My recollection is that right now there's not a parking light, a stoplight there, you know, intersection there, where we, done any kind of traffic study to see if there would need to be one put in there?
We would check that and look at it, but understand this, this is, this design is purely arbitrary. This is just a spatial representation. Don't know that that's where the entry would end up be. Maybe there. If it is, we would certainly have to look at whether a light could go here or not. I'm not, again, I would have to defer to the engineering group on that, but in terms of how, the proximity to the--
Well, if there was, if a light did have to go there, would that come out of the senior citizen budget? I mean, I ask these questions because you indicated in, on the North Base site, for example, that the traffic work would have to be done and indicated that that would come out of the senior citizens' budget. I'm just wondering if, if a light had to be put in there because the senior citizen center was located there, would that come out of their budget?
I would say no. We have a separate line item for certain kind of traffic, either intersection improvements or something, for the Norman Forward projects that we could draw from.
And isn't that same line item available for the Norman Forward projects if they were done in North Base? My recollection--
Yes.
--was funds included there.
It is.
So that would actually have to come out of the seniors' budget either.
Correct. The extra million or so dollars for the road improvements and all that was, is accounted for separately. That's already a separate accounting, if you will, of the Norman Forward program.
Okay.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. So I did have a award meeting at the, our center over there back in December. It was actually the first time I'd had a award meeting there, and it's not a very big building, but we did get to learn a little bit about the history of it being a teen center, and I think the city might have gotten some sort of federal grant to build it back in the late 60s, early 70s. But we were told that it wasn't used much anymore, so this area is something I've been thinking a lot about and the road projects and everything. One thing I would mention is that at this intersection, Jenkins is already five lanes, so it won't be widened any further right here. And the right-of-way for the widening of Jenkins already exists and won't take any park space that I can identify. Constitution here, even without the realignment, is already three lanes, and that is the proposal in the transportation bond is to widen Constitution to three lanes from Jenkins to the golf course. So in my study of this issue, the road projects are not going to impact the space of the park at all, except if the realignment does happen, it potentially will add a significant amount of space to the park that would allow for expansion of a senior center south. And in our previous meetings, I've stated that the concept drawing of the senior center on here isn't, isn't one that I would support, but we've talked about how different ways that building could be laid out. And I think in this concept, this 22,000-square-foot building is based on a one-story building, I believe, so--
That's correct.
With a two-story building, we'd be looking at a lot less of a footprint there, and that would allow even more room for expansion without going into the Medieval Fair and wouldn't rely on a realignment happening either. So I don't know when I first brought up there, first met with city staff about the realignment thing, probably five years ago, I don't even know, was the first time we talked about it. Probably the first time I asked, when are we going to talk about a transportation bond again? Because it had been, the last one was 2012, so I thought, you know, we do one every six, seven years. When will be the next one? Because I really want to get a couple of projects on there. And Constitution was a project that I really wanted to see on the transportation bond. Jenkins was identified as a top project, but in the original discussions, Constitution was not, not included as a project for improvement. But I felt with Norman Forward improvements to Reeves Park, we were going to be bringing a lot more people to Reeves Park, and with the Medieval Fair already having a lot of attendance and the potential now of, of the senior center being there, I thought it was really important that Constitution and Jenkins both be on the transportation bond, and thankful to Norman voters for approving that, and I'm really excited to be, you know, representing this area, that those two projects are going to be happening. So, and I've been waiting till just now to finally hear where that softball stadium might be located, because I was really concerned, because I think the realignment is a really important transportation project for this part of Norman. We have several other areas in Norman where two intersections being close together like this has become a real problem, and this is an opportunity to address that here before it does become a real problem. You know, with Reeves Park being used more, a new softball stadium, and other things going on in this part of the campus, these two intersections being so close together could become a real problem in the future. So I'm hopeful that OU will commit to that project with us and we can get that done. So I, you know, I told the representatives of Medieval Fair that I wouldn't support any design of a senior center in this location if it impacted them negatively. They're our biggest tourist attraction, they bring a lot of revenue to the city, and, and I just, I think this can be done here without impacting, negatively impacting anybody else. I think it could be a very good atmosphere and location for senior citizens to be as well. And, you know, I represent this area, I grew up around here, and it's one of my favorite areas of Norman, and I think there's a lot of good things that could happen here. So I'm looking forward to talking about this, this further, and it is something I've been thinking about quite often, so I appreciate any other comments and questions about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
This is a matter of a comment, I guess, than question, but, you know, as a businessman, there are three principles, you know, when we're looking at a new business or building a business or purchasing a business, and the first thing is location, and the second thing is location, and the third thing is location. And so philosophically, since the beginning, I remember Councilman-- And so philosophically, since the beginning, I remember Councilman Holman and I, I think I had the first real discussion, you know, as a council member about this, and to me, two things that are vitally important to this were walkability, bikability, the public transportation component of it, and a central, a central location. And so as I look in my decision-making flow chart, I've got three options, a north location, there's two options, three options, central location, and a southern location. And then within that flow chart, there is land that's free for, to the city, and there's land that has to be purchased. And so you go through that flow chart of decision-making, weighing those different options, and, you know, as I look at the southern location, it's still in the middle of a bunch, it's not around any houses, you know, there's not people within what I would consider to be a walkable distance. You know, I live a, you know, a half a mile to the west of there, and that would be a long walk, you know, for us to make that, you know? And so maybe it's a mile. There's going to be a lot of traffic. You got games, you got a lot of things, I think, that are going to be obstacles, intimidating factors in terms of traffic for seniors going and utilizing that. And, and so I guess, you know, my, my question is, are we married to this one option in the central part of Norman? I mean, can we not look? I mean, as I drive around here, there's rundown buildings on Gray Street that could be demolished. There, I mean, this looks like there's just, I don't know, from, I don't feel like we're married to this idea of putting it right next door. I don't think anybody's, I'm totally not in favor of you using up any of Andrews Park, but if we're going to spend money, the place to spend money, to me, is in a central Norman location and do a thorough vetting of the facility, you know, the adjacent land between this municipal complex and the, and the library, the central area, which does check a lot of boxes in terms of it's central for all of Norman. It could be walked to by many, many, many people. You can walk to the downtown, it's going to be a driver for downtown business. People at the senior center can go to, say, a restaurant after it closes, just walk to it. Bikable, there's just a lot of boxes that get checked, I think, in a central location. And it's, and it's a big enough, important enough project that is worthy of spending some money to acquire what I would consider to be the right location.
Councilmember Casselberry, and then Councilmember Scott.
Well, I won't have to say very much, because Councilman Holman said everything that I was going to say or comment on, but I did have a question. Go back one more slide. On the proposed footprint, would it be, I know, I know this is just a proposal, but what if you just flipped the building to the south, but the parking lot on the north? And then if you do expand, you've got to the south. So I mean, I know this is very-
Nothing magic.
You're just looking at the footprint of, does it fit?
Yes.
But I was wondering if, you know, that, keep that as, as an option, and then we wouldn't have to move into the medieval fair during the construction phase.
Yeah.
But I, I do like it, basically, everything Councilman Holman says is, is kind of what I agree with, and I was going to point out, what he pointed out, that, that the roadway is already five lanes or three lanes right there, and where this is at, and the widening is going to be taken from a little farther north, the same thing with Constitution, so. And I do like the price of the land.
I, I do want to make a, a comment about, and I, I wish I'd brought a copy of it. I've taken it to several of the meetings that we've had. Sarah went in and did a demographics map of where seniors 65 and older, and I know we're talking about 50 and older now, but she did a map of where the, the seniors lived, and it was very interesting because there was a lot of clustering on the west side of I-35. There was quite a bit of clustering south of Highway Nine and south of Lindsay. I know a lot of, that's where my parents used to live over in that area. And there was a clustering on the east side of 12th Avenue. And when you, when you looked at it, because my initial feeling about Reeves was it was too far south, but when you think about what roads you can take to get to something, and I do think the five football games a year are, could be problematic, but when you look at the roads that you can take to get there, you can come around on 36 and hit Highway Nine and come around, and then you, you hit Jenkins and only have like a mi, less than a mile to go to get there. And the same thing about on the east side, I can get there in 10 minutes from my house, and I live on 48th Avenue East. So I, I was surprised by where the clustering of the seniors were, so.
And if I made it-
And I'm sorry, and I took over for Ms. Scott. Sometimes the mayor just can't help herself. So I will go to Ms. Scott and then Councilmember Bierman after her.
Hi, Judd. I have like three or four questions here for you. First, which option is the most expedient option?
Which of them?
Yes.
Probably this one.
The Reeves Park option? Okay, thank you. The second question I have is that development cost, it says here that the development costs would be lower than at the other sites, but-
Two of the other sites.
Of two of the other sites, but it doesn't give a figure.
Well, the other, the figures were in the, the library site-
Uh-huh.
Was a million and a half approximately to acquire the, the residential structures. The Andrews site was a million, a million for drainage-
Okay.
-work, plus another year's time for the-
But it's lower than the development cost at either of those sites?
Yeah, we don't have either of those options or issues at this location.
Okay. I noticed also that the Norman Senior Association has voted twice to recommend Reeves, as well as the senior ad hoc group, the Reeves Park ad hoc group have also both voted for this. So I guess that's just an observation, but did they recommend any other sites?
That's after seeing this summary of, of what we've looked at. And, and back to, if I might, to one of Councilmember Carter's comments, I think this is about four years that we've been looking. We've looked at many locations, not vetted out as far as we did some of these that you've seen, and we just haven't found anything. And one of the comments made, I believe it was the senior ad hoc group, somebody made the comment about, none of these are really perfect, but if we wait for the perfect site, we may never build a project. And so that seemed to get some support, and I wanted, I don't want to speak for that group, but I did want to share that comment. Agreed, none of, none of these sites are perfect, if you will. Some are better than others, and some are less expensive than others.
Okay. So it sounds like a lot of the groups have voted on this one, and then I'm wondering if the road project connecting Constitution to Imhoff would in any way slow the, okay, no, wouldn't slow it down?
No.
And my last question is, does the university currently offer seniors, like discounts on sporting events, or could we work something out with them where if they have a membership to the senior center, if they would also get discounts? Because I heard football mentioned earlier, but maybe the university would partner with us and provide discounts or packages to them on football, basketball, softball. I know my neighbors go see softball games all the time.
We could check with them. We have not done that. I don't know how they would answer that until we approach them and ask them. We could-
But it hasn't been done before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So that was the end of my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Bierman?
So you actually took one of my points, which is that I don't think there's ever going to be a perfect site, just ones we can live with better than others and ones that have lower cost than others. And my big concern with Reeves Park is the impact of OU sports on the ability to access the senior center on given times of the day, certain times of the year. Let's hope for number one teams across the board, and if that happens, we're going to have a lot more interest in game days, and especially with a new softball facility. You know, I think that that's going to be really popular. But my one question is, I'm hearing a lot of talk about different expansion options for the Reeves Park senior center in different ways, but what I'm not hearing is the potential to go up and not out. I am pretty averse to increasing impervious surface area in this city right about now, and so I would hope that no matter where we decide to put this, that we will keep in mind the ability to build up rather than out. As much as I would love to see an expandable senior center, I certainly don't want to end up with a plan that only allows us to go out and increase the amount of impervious surface area. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I do, and, and either option works, certainly. The ones, the, the models of, of facilities we've seen from around the country, most of those are, not all, but most of those are single-story. They're considered easier to get around in and safer to get around in. There's no stairs to deal with, et cetera, et cetera. Doesn't mean that, that method can't be used, you know, elevators get people up and down and so forth. So, and we have seen some examples of new facilities that are multi-story. So sure, we can take a look at it. Once we were to get a design team on board, one of the first things they would do is hold a series of public input meetings and work towards some sort of a design solution, and those kinds of questions would be vetted out at that point in time.
Well, I would certainly prefer to see us go in that direction, and considering it seems like the concern from the medieval fair folks is the potential for future expansion, I think that they would probably sleep better at night, knowing that we were looking at design options that allow us to go up rather than out. Thanks.
Councilmember Hitman?
Judd, I had a few other questions. Is there a public transit stop currently at Reeves Park?
I believe so.
Is there, is there a cart stop there?
Does anybody know?
There's not? I, my, I did not think that there was.
I thought there was.
The closest one to Reeves Park is Timberville? No, Timberville, the way, Timberville and Ave, where there's-
So the point just is, is that it's well over a block away, I believe, from Reeves Park, the nearest public transit stop. And with our current status of the negotiations with the university on the cart and the city's budget situation, it doesn't seem likely that we're going to be able to expand service. And so I think that is a con, that's not on your chart. There is, I'll just say, at least, a public transit stop at the YMCA, which is near the North Base site, that had been being discussed with the Norman Forward projects. And so I think, again, that's something that, in making an informed decision, people need to be aware of, and, and the likely would not be public transportation to the senior center at Reeves Park, based on the current information we have right now. The second question I have would, is what would be the timing, phasing of the park master plan projects with the construction of the senior center?
Park, first phase of the park work will begin, actually, right in these fields you see it on the right side of this particular picture, once the park maintenance facility is removed, the more than, probably the, the park work would begin first. I mean, we would begin the design process for the senior center, I would guess a year to complete that, and then another year to build it. And I would think within that time, we'll be working in this area to the east of this, where these fields are shown on this drawing.
Okay. And my recollection, at your presentation several months back, when we were discussing the North Bay site, was a very similar schedule. In fact, the schedule you presented showed, starting April 1st, for the North Bay site, taking a year to do the design, and then a, a year or so for a construction, a 24-month timeframe. So it seems to me that, from a time perspective, I've heard you say that this Reeves Park is the fastest, but it sounds to me like they're relatively comparable in the time it would take for either the North Bay site or the Reeves Park site. Wouldn't that be fair?
I would say this one would be faster, because we don't have to go through any land acquisition. We, we could start, we could invite our design teams in for interviews, starting whenever you tell us to, get them selected, get them started. In the other case, we'd have to at least go, I don't know how long it would take to do the land acquisition.
Well, we already have part of it under contract, and my recollection, like I said, at a prior meeting, you presented a schedule that showed, starting April 1st, and that was based on us having it under contract. And so it seems like it's one half dozen the other. I mean, we're, maybe we're talking a month or two, I guess.
Maybe.
I just, I just don't, I mean-
It's an extra step over there that we wouldn't have to do here, that's all I'm saying. I don't know what the time difference would be.
Well, do you think that we would need to wait to, or could the, could the realignment of the road potentially have an impact on the design and waiting to get a decision on the realignment?
Of Constitution?
Yes, sir.
No, I don't think so. This plan would work without moving Constitution. Moving Constitution, we, we see as a bonus, allows us to pick up some additional land to the south and possibly do some extra things to the south. But if that didn't happen for some reason, this plan could still work.
Well, I guess my concern on that point, though, is looking at your slide where you showed the realignment, it shows the veer off of Constitution being just, looks like before the Reeves Park access. And so it seemed to me that there could be a question that if the realignment does happen, you know, how could that affect the, you know, entry into the Reeves Park access? I mean, maybe that can be done, but it seems like there could be some discussion there, because obviously I assume you're going to be building the softball or the baseball, the fields, whatever they are, in that area, and so you're going to have to have some place of accessing the park, but it just seems to me like there could be some questions raised if there, if the road was realigned that could affect the access point. Maybe not, but from this schematic, it looks like there possibly could be.
I'd answer that.
I mean, I mean, I assume you've looked at the schematic, and I know it's just a rough schematic, but it shows that the road begins to veer off before the access road.
I have looked at it, certainly, and I would defer to the engineers about more specific starting, stopping points and so forth, and even if we had to do temporary access into the park, that, you know, that can be accomplished, but I don't know that there's any, I defer to Sean here, but I would, I don't know there's any more detail than this to even talk about at this point.
Does the city control over whether or not, does the city, does the city control the decision over whether or not the road's realigned?
No.
The, the university does?
Thank you, Councilmember Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works. First, I would just say Judd's doing a great job answering all these questions. This is a concept sketch, just like the concept sketch for the senior center. They don't give too much attention to detail to any of those, would be my advice. That road realignment could take a number of different forms when we actually get to the point of design and coordination with the university. Would just point out that if you look at this sketch here, three of the four corners are owned by the University of Oklahoma, so southeast, southwest, and northwest. The city only owns the northeast corner. So the, as Judd indicated, we've met recently with officials at, at OU, staff members at OU, who, as Councilman Holman has mentioned, that we've been in contact for literally four or five years discussing this concept, and they're very much in favor. They support the concept a great deal. They, they favor the, the elimination of two intersections and combining those into one. We've even talked about a roundabout possibly, as opposed to a signalized intersection. So a lot of discussion needs to take place before this happens. But to answer your, your question a moment ago, the university really controls the destiny of this concept, ultimately. They would have to agree to, to giving up land, to, to subdividing these, these parcels of land, and then ultimately, they would have to agree to sell or donate that, I guess it'd be the northeastern quadrant of the realignment to the city. I suspect that would be a sale of property, based upon our recent discussions with the university. They don't, they don't give anything away anymore, so we would be buying that parcel of land from them as part of this realignment concept.
So Sean, I guess that was my question, the, the land that might be freed up if the Constitution is realigned, is that owned by the city or owned by the university?
The land that would be freed up is owned by the university, and they would, I presume they would retain probably all of it, except this parcel that would be adjacent to the proposed senior center.
So it sounds like another factor to consider in these sites would be, if that land was freed up, there would be an acquisition cost, it sounds like, to acquire if we were going to expand it.
I suspect so. I would only mention that in our conversations with the university officials, they understand that the city is also bringing millions of dollars of transportation improvements, including perhaps this one. We could easily factor this realignment into our Jenkins or Constitution or both projects, and the university would not have to pay for any of that. I think that's a point of negotiation, a strong point that we have, is to say that we will take care of the transportation systems, the design, the construction, and so on, if you dedicate the, the land that we need to, to do it, and if you dedicate this parcel of land to the city for future senior center expansions. So I think that's a really good point of negotiation that we have. So, I think that's a really good point of negotiation that we have, and the staff there at the university seemed inclined to move in that direction.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
Judd, the last question I had is, do we know what the position would be of the Senior Association group if the opportunity or the option was still on the table to have all three Norman Ford sites located in North Bay? Would that still be their preferred location? Because that was my prior understanding until things got delayed when we began to negotiate through the MOU with a developer to potentially put two Norman Ford projects in the North Park area.
Not sure how to answer that, really, councilmember, other than they have recommended this site two different times, and I've said that before. I don't know that I've heard them say anymore about North Bay. One comment that I did hear about all three facilities being together, regardless of whether it's North Bay or U N P, was not a unanimous comment, but there were several comments about, wait, wait a minute, we don't really want to use the same pool or the same gym. We want to do some of those things that are more dedicated just to the seniors.
Yeah. I mean, and having them all three together does mean they have to share a pool, but they would have more space potentially to have a bigger facility or to add on to. It's like...
It was just one of the initial concepts that we talked about for reducing some of the development costs, but that turned out to be not a real favorable idea.
Yeah.
I believe, yeah, Councilmember Carter.
I guess I want to more clearly express why I feel like the Reeves Park location is not a good location, and it has to do with having lived on a block off Imhoff Road for 29 years and traveling through this area almost on a daily basis. And the traffic problems there are more than just five football games. There's, every morning, there's traffic, commuters going to work, OU and the meteorology center. There's students coming and going from class, parking at Lloyd Noble Center, there's buses coming and going, there are softball games, girls' softball games that are highly attended, men's baseball games that are attended, they've got men's and women's basketball games at Lloyd Noble. You've got, I mean, I played softball at Reeves Park for 25 years, you know, after about 7:00, it's pretty good to get in and out of that place, but between 4:00 and 6:30, it's challenging. And so, I just don't see it, I mean, it'd be a great location to put a convenience store, high-traffic area, people looking for something, but in terms of having a senior center, I just don't envision this as being what we want. There's going to be just this constant obstacle of traffic, it's going to be an impediment psychologically, people, as they get older and more timid, guys like me that are turning 60, just don't want to, you know, deal with that. And so, my second part is a question about, you said you've looked at this area around central Norman, I'm going to just call this library municipal complex area for four years. I mean, it, in that process, I mean, and so I was looking at the cons, let's just assume we scratched, let's just say it was free, it's just, you know, we're trying to compare apples to apples, and if we were just looking at this area beside the cost, if you were going to say if this was free, would this be our best, best area? Requires condemnation and relocation. Well, have we, do you send a notice out to the, if you're interested in this area, say, for a couple of blocks in any direction, you send a letter out to those owners and say, are you willing to sell your property versus have it condemned? Now, that would definitely change the speed of the process, I would say. If you had a willing seller, you could close that in 60 days versus having to go through the whole condemnation, appeal process, I could see that lasting the year, like you described. You know, the loss of residential housing, you know, I see that, you know, a few houses, you know, not being a huge, you know, and again, limited space for future expansion. Well, I think that if you're, if you're trapped to this specific spot, that could be, but if you're not trapped by that specific spot, you know, it may not be the con. So, with the, explain to me the process of reaching out to an area and finding out if you can purchase that area for use as a city property. I know we also own properties around this area, you know, adjacent properties to different things, we talked about that, you know, before.
We would, just as you said, we would reach out to the landowners.
So, when was the last time we reached out to the landowners? Is that four years ago? I mean, it's possible, a lot of things could change.
It was three or four years ago on the library site, if I recall, that was pretty early on. We have talked to some, some local real estate people about businesses on Gray Street. Felt like that was extremely expensive in terms of an option. But if we just identify any site that I think might be a good location, and there's people, landowners there, either with businesses or homes, we would obviously have to contact them and see if they were willing, and if they were, they were a willing seller, and if they aren't. And then it's a question of, could we afford it, fit it into our budget? And then if they weren't willing, then is the council willing to condemn that property?
Just seems prudent that we, as a council, should, A, decide, you know, if we're willing to spend money or if we're not willing to spend money. And then if we're willing to spend money for a site, then let's, would be prudent to reexamine the possible areas in central Norman, central municipal complex area, to see if there are or aren't willing landowners, and what that might cost. It'd just be a prudent exercise to really thoroughly vet, revet this area that hasn't maybe been looked at in three or four years, be my thoughts.
Well, it's, it's not just a matter of, are we willing to spend the money or not? It is, there are constraints on the money that we have to spend. So, you've got to consider if we're going to spend money on a site. Right now, we have $7.5 million that, and maybe we could put together a little bit more, but if you start spending a million and a half on a site, then a million, and I don't know how much on environmental studies, and you do all these other things, then, and you've got stormwater, and you've got other issues, and stormwater is an issue in that area that you're talking about. So, you have to consider that, too. It's not just, are we willing to spend money? If somebody gives me, if I had a lot more money, I'll tell you, I'd, I'd buy everything you guys wanted, but I, I know I don't have all that money, so...
I mean, that's, that's helpful to me, Mayor, in knowing, I mean, if, if $7.5 million is the hard ceiling, I mean, I don't know if we can build a 20,000-square-foot building at $300 a square foot, 6 million, you know? So, you know, we're already at that ceiling, you know? So, I mean, it's like, why are we even considering purchasing anything if our hard target's 7.5? It seems like we're wasting our time here considering these other things. But if our hard target's not 7.5, I mean, if we do have, you know, a million here or a million there, from whatever thing, I just don't have that clear in my mind yet, what, what is our budget, you know? So, to go through that exercise might be a prudent thing, would be helpful for me.
Okay. And I'm not saying that that's absolutely the hard ceiling, but everything, we've got lots of pieces going here, and so, it would have to, it would have to come from something else, something else in Norman Forward, something else in the TIF. So, that, you know, those, those are the issues, is where does the, we know how much money we got with the Griffin lease, we know how much money we got for that. So, right now, that's, that's what we're, that's our base.
Would it be a fair assumption that, let's just say, we fully implement fulfilling the MOU over the next six or eight weeks, and, you know, and then that's going to have an impact on Norman Forward, potentially have a big impact on Norman Forward, and how much money might or might not be available to shift toward other projects like the senior center? And so, if we're able to capture some savings through our MOU agreement and those facilities, then we might be able to reinvest that money, so to speak, in the senior center concept, and make it taller, make it wider, blah, blah, blah. So, I just don't know if I'm comfortable making this decision until we've gone through the MOU process that we're currently working through.
Okay. Councilmember Carter.
As Councilmember Wilson put it so perfectly, I believe we are suffering, suffering from analysis paralysis, and we have beaten this horse so dead, it's dead like five times over. The senior citizens group has said multiple times they want Reeves Park, the Medieval Fair group says that they're comfortable with this site. I am ready to move forward tomorrow. It's time, it's been time, we have worked it out. Thank you. And, and it's, it's your, your work, it's your recommendations, it's, we're listening to you, I'm, I'm ready to go. We were talking about the senior center in 2016, and we have made a lot of presentations and a lot of analysis, and, and Mr. Foster, and all of the Parks and Rec staff, and Mr. O'Leary, everyone, thank you for all of it, but it is time to move forward, and, and I'm ready to do so. So, I hope that my councilmembers will join me in supporting moving forward on this incredibly important project. I know that we have been burned by the University of Oklahoma on some deals, so we can't rely on the land intersections being aligned, but if they're not aligned, we've lived with it the way it is for years, I think we'll be fine. I also work at the University of Oklahoma, and I drive down Jenkins when I have events at the Weather Center, and it's not busy during, it is busy when you go to work and when you leave, I'll completely agree with that, because I've done that as well, but during the day, when I think the center would be used the most, it's quite accessible. And in terms of a bus route, the bus barn, or whatever you want to call it, is directly south of that, if we're ever going to realign one.
Bus transfer is on Brooks.
Excuse me?
Bus transfer is on Brooks.
Correct. But if we wanted to realign our routes, that would seem like maybe the easiest spot to do it. So, I appreciate everyone's concern, I love how thorough we are, I think our thoroughness should show you that we do care about this project, and we do want to get it right, but it's time to move forward, and I support the Reeves Park location.
Councilmember Holman.
I think, I mean, see, I'm about to go into my seventh year on council, and I've been talking about a senior center for five of those years, and we've been trying to figure out how to do this. Many of us, several councilmembers that aren't here anymore, have spent hours and hours trying to figure this, this one out. And I personally, I prefer a central downtown location, too, that's where I would ultimately prefer it be, so that you could be part of the downtown and all the events and everything that go on. And if I had a magic wand, that's exactly what we would do. But right now, you know, there's not a public transit stop at Andrews Park, there's not going to be one at the new library. And, yeah, there's not, there's not one right now, and there's not going to be one unless we negotiate with the new operator to put one there. And there's going to be a lot of new traffic on the new James Garner Avenue, there's going to be a lot of traffic on Acres from the new library, there's a lot of traffic on North Flood at the North Bay. So, all of our options, Ruby Grant Park on the west side on 36th, all of these options have a lot of traffic around them. There's zero options that have no traffic or little traffic around them, all of them do. But in my opinion, Reeves Park is the one that has the most access to it. As the mayor was mentioning, there's multiple ways for multiple directions that you can get to Reeves Park from all over Norman. It's a lot easier to get to Reeves Park than it is to get to central Norman in a lot of cases for a lot of people. So, Reeves Park is not where I would ideally like to do this, but I do know that representing this area for the last six years, there are a lot of senior citizens that live in this area of Norman. There are three independent living centers in this area, Rivermont is right down the road from here, there's two of them on Oak Tree Avenue, just right by here. The two new road projects are going to have bike lanes and multimodal paths on both sides of them, connecting the neighborhoods to Reeves Park. So, again, it's not the perfect location, it's not as centrally as I would like to have it either, but I think we have spent so much time on this issue that we do need to make a decision. I think we have an option in front of us that a lot of people support or are willing to support, and I think the council needs to make a decision, and I think we should make a decision to go forward with the Reeves Park option. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
I love, 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 loved, the idea of a Generation Square over near the YMCA, and, and for me, what I'm trying to consider, I know centrally located is important to a lot of folks in this room, probably, but as a representative of a ward that goes to all the way to 180th Street East, either the North Bay or the Reeves Park location are really wonderful because of the access from the east side. So, if, I mean, I could, I could be in love with either one of those, knowing now that the Medieval Fair is okay with it, knowing that the senior committees are okay, that they voted for this a couple of times, I think the Reeves Park location is wonderful. And I, I, like you said, whoever said it, don't want to wait for the perfect location any longer. This has been the theme of my whole, you know, one whole term on council, that we need to find a senior center, we need to build a senior center, we need to have the funding for a senior center. This has, for me, the missing element, which is free land. It's ease of access for Highway 9 for a lot of Ward 5, and a lot of the folks that live way out, which I don't know that they're necessarily going to be the users of this facility, so then I defer to the, the seniors that do live in my ward, which are in those apartments to the south of Highway 9 in that area. So, I'm going to say that I can support the Reeves Park location.
Okay. I, I think most of the seniors know where I stand on this, so that, we did this so we could have a chance to get more public input. We didn't have a lot of people come when we did the senior ad hoc committee meeting, and so, I'd like to, if there's a representative, I'd kind of like to hear from groups. I know we've got Medieval Fair represented, we've got seniors, I think I see somebody from multi-sport or aquatic, so let's, let's let the groups have somebody represent them, and then if other people want to say things, we can. So, seniors, have you designated? Yes.
Based on Councilmember Scott's question earlier, I sent a quick email, and I got a quick response from the Community Relations Director for the OU Athletic Department. They currently offer senior rates and a one-pass that grants admission to over eighty events at senior discount options, and we would also be happy to organize other giveaways or experiences for that population as well, and anything else that would help create more entertainment options for them.
Certainly, great, okay.
So, I'm the senior designate tonight, and I'm going to read our statement. Wrote it before all these questions, so many questions that are coming up tonight, but I hope you all will realize that most of these are, questions are needed for the design phase, and it was 2014, I would only disagree with you on that one point, not 2016, 2014. The Norman Senior Association has consistently maintained a site-neutral position, but we've done this as a way to move forward in the process to getting a center that Norman seniors deserve down the road. We wanted to get down the road. We do agree that Reeves Park is an acceptable choice, and we're ready to lock in a site, to begin the planning, to get the association agreement for this site. We've also recognized that funding will come through Norman Forward, and that Griffin Park savings, which can be utilized for a senior center, amounts now to about $7.5 million, as you said, Mayor. So, we believe that this initial funding, if locked in, would allow the planning process to begin, and that's what we're most interested in, is the planning process to begin. As long as the city continues to move in the direction of a center our citizens deserve, you can expect our backing and support.
Thank you. Anne Marie, do you want to get up and say something?
I just want to confirm that everybody has been speaking on our behalf, yes, we are in agreement. If the Reeves Park Phase 1 changes are done before the tearing down of the Reeves Center and building of the new senior center, it will not have a negative impact on Fair. The Parks Department and other city staff have worked with us, given us to-scale maps, we were able to map it out, and to figure out that all the critical components, especially the joust, would still fit. the joust, would still fit in the new footprint of, of the park. And in reference to some of the other questions about the entrance to the park, there's actually two entrances to the park and the way the design's currently drawn, you would be able to enter at the Jenkins entrance as well as the Constitution entrance and still get to the parking lot for the senior center. So there's actually two options there on that. And a very strong thank you to the volunteers that helped me figure out the map and to the city staff that provided some of the map information and statistics and details and have worked with us on the planning. And a thank you to all of our supporters that have expressed their concern for the fair.
Thank you.
I'm Gail Hobson and I have had the honor of serving as chair of the ad hoc committee for the senior committee this last year and recognizing that I came in late. I know there's been many, many hours and years of work on this project and I appreciate that, appreciate the city mostly for getting me up to speed. And I just want to say that the reason we took that vote and we took it, by the way, in a unanimous vote in favor of Reeves Park is because we had looked carefully with the city in terms of this location and other options. We'd also looked careful, we'd had the conferences, all of you know, and after really soul searching, because nothing's going to be perfect, but I know I've heard over and over, please go forward, whatever you do, go forward, make a decision. So that's why the committee, the ad hoc committee unanimously voted for Reeves Park. It was really in consideration of a lot of the issues that Joe brought up and, and you know, it was just going to be delays and more money and more money that we can't put in the facility. That's, I think, the biggest thing to consider. We've got to, we have to have the site before the facility can even start with the architects. So I hope that you all really would like to encourage the council to vote for Reeves Park tonight. Thank you.
My name is Mike Peters. I'm a Norman native. I was born, I've lived here all my life. I was a mailman for 34 years. My route consisted of the area around downtown Norman, the courthouse. I would like to remind everybody that until 1965, there was not a county, city, federal facility west of the railroad tracks. Everything was on the east side and the senior citizen, I was the mailman at the Senior Citizens Center from 75 to 99. And I feel like we need to keep that Senior Citizen Center here in core Norman, which to me was Berry Road to 12th Avenue, Robinson to Lindsay. That was what it was whenever I was a child and that's the way it stayed for a long time until they put in Thunderbird and we had to annex the whole county. But I tell you right now that we've got bus service at the Senior Citizens where it's at now and June Benson Park is right across the street there. There's a triangle of land there that has two houses and Phil Redwine's law office. Now I don't, I know that there was no, none of these proposed sites that were west of the railroad tracks and the majority of the area here in Norman is east of the railroad tracks. I was just, and as far as I'm concerned, Reeves Park is too far out, the North Base is too far out. I think that here at Andrews Park is the best site for the Senior Citizen Center as far as open ground. You've got that old reservoir that's been sitting there, was unused for, well, I don't know how long. It was put in whenever I was a child and it's, but if we're going to locate the senior center someplace, put it someplace where we can walk to. You talk about walkability here in the middle of Norman and then you want to put that out there on the South Base where there's no way that I'm going to walk that far and I walk three miles every morning with my dog around this area of Norman. But I, I just feel strongly that they need to keep that Senior Citizen Center here in the center of town, not out in the outskirts. That's just my feeling. Thank you.
Hey, Mark Campbell. A senior center at Reeves Park is isolated from other amenities. Adults need the ability to trip chain where one accomplishes daily trips that start and end at home. An Andrews Park Senior Center will allow for greater ease of trip chaining to the library, post office, municipal complex, civic engagement, what seniors are engaging in right now, in addition to countless restaurants, galleries, festivals and shopping downtown. An Andrews Park Senior Center would also not be physically diametrically opposed across town from the YMCA. Daytime Reeves Park traffic is heavily congested by OU traffic. People want to take full advantage of a senior center, but they, their family, friends and staff need to be able to count on a transportation schedule. Getting count, council getting acquiescence of those who put on the Medieval Fair currently does not negate your promise to fairgoers that you would not consider Reeves Park for the senior center. University North Park and Reeves Park each abut OU land, which portends any iteration of city council being unduly swayed by OU and business interests for the city of Norman to gobble up land on the citizens dime. Shame on city council for not providing for affordable housing, the federal definition, for seniors in the Center City Tax Increment Finance District, a forty-something block of downtown Norman between Maine and OU.
Okay. Mark, we're talking about the site for the senior citizens.
Right, I am too. Not all seniors will be jet setting to a senior center. As we are all painfully aware of the campus corner routes, somewhat near Reeves Park are not city routes, which are in jeopardy. Ad hoc committees and senior associations are subject to peer pressure and moneyed interests. As a council, you are tasked with doing what's right, not easy, quick and affordable. I live well below the level of poverty and seeing firsthand the challenges the poor have accessing services. And Andrews Park Municipal Library adjacent location will serve seniors best. A senior center needs to be downtown. The very poorly utilized west side of Andrews Park is where it needs to be. Underground water detention is possible, the new central library has it. A blade of grass is not more precious in Andrews Park than Reeves or the University North Park. Seniors have paid taxes in Norman their whole adult lives, they deserve a center downtown on public land they have paid for, near amenities they will be able to use. A mobility scooter is not going to be able to cut it from either the north or south Medicare replaces batteries on a scooter every five years. Our new 80,000 square foot library downtown is about to be our de facto senior center. Serving countless needs all day long, it will be on whatever public transportation we hopefully end up with. Seniors will use the library and the municipal complex as part of their routine and Andrews Park location would be a natural extension. We must not rely on the whims of OU. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, I've got three more people here.
Mary Francis, 850 Cardinal Creek condos. The west of the new library where we must buy land, which requires time and money and there's no room for expansion, so I think we can mark that one off. Then we went through Andrews Park, which is in core Norman. I like that idea. It's by the library, central. However, there is a major problem, again, because we have the flood plain and FEMA has to be involved and that's a problem. We are getting older. We have waited a long time. There are folks that I want to be able to see to walk into the new senior center and all the time and money negotiations just eats up our time. The North Base site is not central. I don't care what you say, it's not central. There's poor access. It's, there's a high cost to a new road that will have to be made. There's a weird intersection there at Robinson, the UNP area. A lot of us are fed up with the tip and the grand bargain and we don't want any more entanglements there. And there's high costs there too, which are undetermined and it's not central. And not to mention that the access would, Rock Creek Road would be very expensive to change. Ruby Grant, way to hell north, no way. So that leaves us with Reeves Park and it works. We've got the land, there's room for expansion. We may be able to negotiate and barter for more land with OU and it doesn't impact any The, the start could be tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. I think we have two more people down here. She's done. Okay.
I'm Irene Harrelson.
Somebody will help you. Hold on just a second.
Oh, okay. I'm Irene Harrelson and have you, has anybody?
Can you give us your address?
Your address? 706 South Berry Road.
Okay, thank you.
And my son, Avon. I just have two questions to ask. One of them, does anybody daily drive down by the campus corner? Because it can scare you to death. If my hair wasn't white sometimes, it'd already be that way again. And the other thing is, has anybody ever taken a wheelchair down the sidewalks of Norman? I did that two days ago and it was, it was a eye-opening experience.
Yes, we have somebody that raised their hand and we are looking at that. Thank you.
So, well, I really appreciate it if it was more central.
Montgomery Johnston, 311 Webster, South Webster. I've been on this game for a long time on where we're going to be and what's a good location. We thought we had it all tied up at, you know, North Base, that would have been sweet. We could have done the Generation Square and all that sort of business. So where, when, when you boil down all the years of doing this and recognizing there may be other opportunities which you should, there's always options, but in this situation, it seems pretty clear that even if, regardless of the realignment, the location there relatively is okay, given that it's a proximity to all the other wards and these, like you, Mayor mentioned, that there was these, you know, concentrations over here. So walkability is absolutely imperative. However, if you look at the paradigm or the, the example that's been set in Oklahoma City, they don't exactly stick all four of those guys downtown. They don't even have one downtown. So what they've got is these remote locations and they're, and they're very successful. That is our precedence. And I appreciate Judd for adjusting his plan that shows 22,000 square feet. And I again, I agree with Councilman Bearman about the low footprint. You can do the activity center in a high deal and do the pools low or whatever and, and then also keeping the green space and that's very important. I, I believe in my assessment over the years that I've been working on this, that Reeves Park is a viable location. It can happen regardless of what happens with OU because we know OU doesn't give a crap about the city. So, you know, let's just make our move and we're good to go. The paradigm, the, the example's already been set in Oklahoma City. Let's do that. Oh, money? There's no lid on that. What the heck, man? Where is Anthony? We got, we, we saved $6 million on the second tranche? Interest? Three? Something like that. Where did that money go? And then we've also got, we've also got other things that everybody's aware of, which is, you know, James Garner, we can get a bounce back from federal government on infrastructure if they're amiable towards that sort of situation. And then there's the Canadian River Project, which is in, it's, it's even higher than the senior center. Let's take, put that guy in the backseat and see what happens. So there's plenty of money in Norman Forward, especially, and I appreciate the city doing an excellent job on not allowing these contractors, the central library, to incur any more change orders. I mean, I haven't seen one in a long time and that's really good. There's a chunk of money there. So there's money in Norman Forward and that's all I'm saying. My point is, I think you've got a great opportunity in, in Reeves Park and let's get it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other groups that are here that want to make a comment? Okay, I want to thank everybody that came. Right now, I've heard from a number of council members that they are ready, we cannot take a vote tonight. This is a study session, but one of the things I might suggest is that we ask the staff to do a resolution that will basically request that we move the money from the Griffin project to the Senior Citizen project and we move forward with the Reeves Park. We could do that and have it on the council agenda for next week. Council member Holman.
I do think that's something that's actually been asked for previously when we got the Griffin money freed up, so I do support that, that idea. My only request or thought would be, before we put it on the council agenda to be voted on, that we get the feedback on the status of the negotiations on the MOU, because there are other two other Norman Forward projects that could be impacted by that negotiation and depending upon the status of those negotiations and if they're fruitful or not, as they may affect the other Norman Forward projects, that could then affect the senior center, it seems. And so I don't know what the timing is on that. I think in my mind, I remember the May 15th date being a date that was important. I've heard council members speak to from the dais and the, the terms of the MOU and so that's next week, I think, also, the 15th.
Yes, we do have planned for your council conference next week, a discussion and an update on those negotiations.
I have heard enough agreement from the council that we go ahead and do the, the resolution and then if you want to vote against it, you can, you can do that, but I'd like to go ahead and put the resolution on the council agenda so we can move forward. Any other comments about this? If not, we can move on to the discussion regarding the creation of the Americans with Disabilities ADA Advisory Committee and that, my man. Does anybody need to take a break? A quick break? Okay, five minute break. Five minute break. No, you can go to the bathroom or?
I'll start you on the first slide.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay, if everybody will come on back, council members, if you'll come back to the dais so we can get started. Don't keep doing it, it'll raise your eyebrows. You don't need to look at it right now, anyway. All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We're on item two. This is the discussion regarding the creation of the Americans with Disabilities ADA Advisory Committee. And we have Jack McMahon here to talk to us.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's my privilege to be here with you this evening. What I'd like to do is a brief review of where we've been, how we got to where we are today, a little bit about what that means, where we, what we are doing actively today on this project, and where I think our vision is for moving forward. I'd like to jump in with a refreshment of the background to this. And of course, at the core of everything that we're working on and talking about is the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Americans Disability Act was one of the premier movements in the, in the field of civil rights, promulgated in 1991. And with the core idea that we were going to deliver equal opportunity to all citizens in any municipality anywhere in the country. So the equitability of opportunity, the equal opportunity to participate in and enjoy the benefits of programs, activities, and services has been afforded to qualified individuals with disabilities. It's the core principle of the ADA. But also supporting that core principle is the notion that what the ADA is representing here is the overarching principle of eliminating barriers to participation. So barrier removal is the overarching theme of this and every one of the accessibility laws. In order to make that happen, there was a built-in feature to the, to the original drafting of the ADA that said that there would be something called a self-inspection and transition plan, which was the requirement of every municipality with more than 50 employees. It was a very comprehensive idea. The idea was that a municipality would go in and actually do an inventory of all its properties, programs, services, and activities, record deficiencies that might exist, and then develop a written plan that could be executed highly accountable, time-sensitive, and budgeted over a defined period of time. Because of the complexity of what the concept was, the concept of equitable opportunity, the requirement was to have two parts. One was also to have this managed by an ADA coordinator. But it also required the input of the public. And I'll get to part of why that, that occurred all the way around. But those were the ingredients that were required, are required, and will continue to be required as part of this important act. So why have an ADA coordinator? Why was this built in into the framework of the plan? First of all, the ADA is far more than just one civil rights law. And this, and the ADA is far more than just a defined law with a set of guidelines. Too often, the ADA is reviewed as a set of guidelines. It becomes elemental as a unit of measurement. When we talk about ADA or accessibility, people have the mindset of the wheelchair. They also have the mindset of measuring stuff. The degree of slope, the width of an access route, the number of parking spaces, the width of turning radius in restrooms. And those are all extremely important. But so too, the ADA goes to the heart of these words, participate in and enjoy the benefits of programs. So what we do as part of our civic life is guaranteed accessibility, not just the facility that we do it in. So if there's storytelling, if there's an event, if there's an activity, if there's something that's occurring in a park, a baseball game, that is an activity or program that has as much right as the need to be able to get in the front door. So the ADA was formed in the framework of having this, but it was built on the shadow of another civil rights act called the Architectural Barriers Act, or ABA. The ABA actually was a forerunner, built in 1968. But the ABA was restricted to architectural barrier removal on federal property situated on federal land. And it only referred to architectural barriers, which were barriers to built facilities or built structures. So that was remedied slightly in 1973, when the, when the Department of Justice created the 1973 Act, Rehabilitation Act, with several components that were really critical, one of them being Section 504 of the 73 Act, which said that program services and activities must be made accessible. A combination of ABA and 504 were inherited in ADA, but they are still part and parcel of the requirement that impacts a municipality. And I will talk to you about that slightly. But the overarching requirement to remove barrier exists over all of these acts. And furthermore, if there is an act like the ADA that doesn't tell us specifically how to remove a barrier, then we're obligated to next, to look to the next highest law that might prevail. So we're consequently needing to constantly refer back to the ABA or 504 or other acts, for example. In this case, for example, if we're working on a new trail in Ruby Grant Park, and we are, the trail used to be covered under ADA. Trails are no longer covered with the 2010 revision of ADA. So theoretically, we would have gone to ABA to look for solutions. The ABA was revised in 2013 with a promulgation of the outdoor developed areas guidelines. So you begin to see the complexity of the network of all the laws that are involved in accessibility. Similarly, the 1973 Rehab Act required that technology become accessible. Oklahoma went one step beyond that and said that we wanted to develop our own Electronic Information Technology Act, which they did in 2006. It's since been revised, adopted in 2015. But now the municipality is required to make sure that electronic information transformation is also accessible. So you're seeing among municipalities and colleges and universities and private businesses, the notion that websites and communication devices must be made accessible. And it's a very, very high item. So it's one that we need to understand and pay attention to. We also have sidewalks, curb cuts, traffic signals, pedestrian signals. In 2011, the Department of Justice began to see that ADA may not have the overarching remedy to the notion that sidewalks are now defined as programs, not just built structures. So there was revision that was, was considered and actually put into a proposal, which is now called the Pedestrian Rights Way Accessibility Guidelines, further complexing this umbrella of laws and acts and concepts that we need to understand. As we move into the idea of consolidating transportation and embracing transportation, we also move into the Department of Transportation. Their bailiwick is also ADA, same law that we're working with, different jurisdiction. But we've got to be able to work simultaneously with the Department of Transportation as we begin to move into that business. And lastly, and if there are any other areas where barriers have been identified, but we don't have solutions for removing them, we've got to look to other best practices, other municipalities, other federal acts. So we begin to see this very, very complicated conceptual role that's part and parcel of the ADA, part of the self-inspection, that falls on the shoulder of the ADA coordinator. And consequently, that was baked into the law to begin with. But why are we requiring citizen input? Why do we need an advisory committee? And the response to that is, how best to understand barriers than unless we view them through the lens of various forms of disabilities? Again, I went back and said the gold standard of accessibility in most of our minds is the wheelchair. But, but there are a significant number of folks in Cleveland County and Norman specifically that have visual, hearing, or cognitive disabilities as well. Matter of fact, cognitive disabilities, including neuroatypical or, or the spectrum, are almost as frequent as, as mobility disabilities. So when we look at this together, we look at 45% of seniors have a disability primarily in the hearing or vision or cognitive areas. So we, we need to consider disabilities and barriers from a whole lot of different venues. And I can tell you one thing about disability. I know a lot about barriers from a wheelchair viewpoint. I don't know much at all about a barrier when looked through the lens of someone who can't see or can't hear. So if I were asked, how do we make this room accessible to someone who can't hear? How could that person participate in the auditory function that's going on here? Or someone who can't see the screen before us? I could have a manual, I could go to look to guidelines. But why wouldn't I instead go to an expert in the field who may already be blind or working with citizens that are blind to get input? So again, the forefathers of the, of the ADA said, embrace the notion of using the expertise of people who have the insight and experience to participate in you to not only help define the solution for the barriers, but to weigh those solutions against other options and other variables that are simultaneously occurring. So citizen input is really, really important. Again, you go back to this idea that architectural barriers, typically we have written guidelines. Program barriers, how to, how to make the sound in this room more effective for citizens who can't hear, is extremely subjective. There are no guidelines for doing that. Yes, there is a requirement to have assistive listening systems, but there's nothing that says you, which listening system? Is a listening system more effective than sign language in a given situation? So again, we need to be able to reference to make subjective decisions and balance them in comparison. that have visual, hearing, or cognitive disabilities as well. Matter of fact, cognitive disabilities, including neuroatypical or the spectrum, are almost as frequent as mobility disabilities. So when we look at this together, we look at forty-five percent of seniors have a disability primarily in the hearing or vision or cognitive areas. So we need to consider disabilities and barriers from a whole lot of different venues. And I can tell you one thing about disability. I know a lot about barriers from a wheelchair viewpoint. I don't know much at all about a barrier when looked through the lens of someone who can't see or can't hear. So if I were asked, how do we make this room accessible to someone who can't hear? How could that person participate in the auditory function that's going on here? Or someone who can't see the screen before us? I could have a manual, I could go to look to guidelines, but why wouldn't I instead go to an expert in the field who may already be blind or working with citizens that are blind to get input? So again, the forefathers of the ADA said, embrace the notion of using the expertise of people who have the insight and experience to participate in you, to not only help define the solution for the barriers, but to weigh those solutions against other options and other variables that are simultaneously occurring. So citizen input is really, really important. Again, you go back to this idea that architectural barriers, typically, we have written guidelines. Program barriers, how to make the sound in this room more effective for citizens who can't hear, is extremely subjective. There are no guidelines for doing that. Yes, there is a requirement to have assistive listening systems, but there's nothing that says you, which listening system? Is a listening system more effective than sign language in a given situation? So again, we need to be able to reference, to make subjective decisions, and balance them in comparison. So in 1970, or I'm sorry, 1993, Norman made its first foray into compliance with the ADA and adopted the first self inspection plan. Twenty-four years later, I'm having a hard time with my fingers. Twenty-four years later, they decided to update it, as you know, you approved the update, and you hired a consultant, Kim Lee Horn, to come in and to do a complete overhaul of the self inspection transition plan. They, in turn, put together an ADA steering committee, twelve citizens from Norman. I happened to be on that steering committee, other members of this audience also were. Those audience members provided input in terms of which areas of sidewalks, which buildings, which portions of policies and services should be reviewed during this first phase of the self inspection plan. During that period of time, program services and activities of every component of city departments were reviewed and evaluated. Three, four buildings, three parks, miles of sidewalks, railroad crossing and signals were also evaluated as part of that inventory, which we call the self inspection or self evaluation. As a result of that, we came up with a list of remedies that were required in each one of those areas. This became the transition plan. This was the identification of a deficiency, the earmarking of why it was deficient, against what part of the law was it deficient, what the cost of remedying it, what the nature of the remedy would be, when that remedy would occur by, in other words, a scheduled time, and then an estimated cost for it. So this was all part of a plan that was promulgated and put together with an incredibly voluminous outline, pages and pages of documents and logs and so forth that went with it. That was, also included a budget, an estimated total cost over five million dollars, with a projected estimated annual budget of about a half million dollars. And that was adopted by you in June of last year. Along with that, there came a series of recommendations for next steps. The establishment of a council-appointed ADA Citizen Advisory Committee, which we're here to talk about tonight, hiring a full-time ADA technician, which is my role, and then continuing on to the implementation of the self inspection and transition plan that was already reviewed, the three buildings, three parks, and so forth. So those have begun, and the responsibility now is to actually roll up sleeves and go to work to do them. As we roll up our sleeves and dive into what the recommendations have already been made, we've also got to consider moving forward and doing the additional twenty buildings, twenty parks, miles of sidewalks, and compare those in terms of what other priorities of accessibility we have in the city. Those similarly will be evaluated, we'll be conducting our own self inventory, our own transition plan, and then implementing that over time. So how are we going to do that? How do we embrace the notion of having this Citizens Advisory Committee? And this is our recommendation. And that is that we form, a technical nature of this would be a standing committee, ADA Citizen Advisory Committee. My recommendation is that it be no more than nine to eleven members. These members will all have qualifications that I'll discuss in a moment. They collectively would work together to come from a different mindset or frame set, each one of them in terms of a different form of a disability. So we have representatives who represent the vision form of a disability, hearing, cognitive, and mobility, sitting around a table with a tremendous amount of expertise that gather together to consider, to provide, review, prioritize, and recommend what we could do and select in terms of moving forward. They would work with me. I would be the project manager, and our initial focus would be on diving in and doing the things that we've identified with the self inspection and transition plan so far. So that is our first and greatest priority. But we can't do this without recognizing there are a number of other issues that are going on throughout the city. There's a tremendous amount of concern over accessible transportation, accessible housing, the ability to participate in events that go on through the city, a disaster emergency management plan. How do we make all these things available and accessible, usable to the citizens of this community? Those items may not necessarily be part of the self inspection transition plan. The Title II of the ADA doesn't necessarily include those items, but nonetheless, they're terribly important. So we need to bring them to the table. These ideas, these problems, these suggestions, these recommendations need to be vetted, discussed, and recognized. Some of them may preempt our future development, but they need to be weighed from a professional standpoint. My recommendation on how best to manage that is that we actually would have members of the primary committee serve to work together in subcommittees with identified other members of the community who have an advocacy role, a current, a special interest in, or a special technical knowledge or skill in one of these areas, transportation, for example, or housing, for example. And then the subcommittee continue to foster the interest, the development, the details of the effort in that particular area, housing, for example. And then representatives of that subcommittee bring an issue back to the committee, where it can be compared with all committee members, and worked alongside, compared against the activity in the self inspection and transition plan. My role would be to work as the project manager. The committee would meet regularly, it would meet quarterly through the year. They would actually advise me on what their recommendations or observations were initially with the self inspection plan, but as we move through time, on all the other areas of accessibility throughout the city. I would be responsible for being your agent, represent the voice of that group to you, and similarly, your voice back to them. I would be doing the work that they're recommending and that you've charged me with doing. I would be reporting back and forth, recording all of the activity that's going on, and hiring or using professional input if needed. The member attributes, what do these folks have in common? What is their general purpose? Number one, they have their own vested stake or vested interest in success. They understand, they have a deep appreciation and experience in the world of accessibility, generally in the world of accessibility law. They'd be motivated by the project to succeed. They need it, they want it for their stakeholders themselves, but they want it for the community as a whole. They have a deep interest, an overarching interest, in the improvement of accessibility throughout the city. Most importantly, I think, is that they'd be willing to work together in a spirit of common commitment, so that when the committee as a group makes a decision, makes a decision or a recommendation on what they think is most important and most valued, is that they can work harmoniously to adopt that in a democratic fashion. So that through a process of negotiation, communication, arbitration, we can come up with a committee that is aggressively working together. The members of this particular committee are members, or many of them are members with disabilities. They are representing mobility, hearing, vision, cognitive, and neuroatypical interests.
We have a council question. Councilmember Scott.
Yes. So as far as the members of the committee, have these people already been identified? Or are you going to be taking recommendations from?
We've had several applications from all over the city. Those applications have been reviewed. We also have other interest groups that have made recommendations on names, and several agencies have made recommendations on the names. Those names I have looked at, I have spoken with, I have referred them to Mayor Miller. So that we have a number of citizens that we are recommending, or we have recommended for membership on this committee.
Okay. Just curious, because I know one of my constituents is hearing impaired, and the council meetings aren't transcribed or interpreted or anything, and so I thought he'd be a great addition. But if you guys have already decided on who's going to go on the committee, I guess it's too late to ask him to fill out an application.
Actually, it's up to the mayor to make that final decision, but we do have, we do have members that are hearing impaired and deaf on the recommendation list right now.
Okay.
So we have considered that, I think. But I'd love to know who they may be, because that is an individual that may work extremely well on one of these subcommittees.
Yeah, he's great. He's a really good, really good guy. Thank you.
I think that's one of the ways in looking, Jack has been responsible for looking at these since he is the one that knows most of the people in different ones of the organizations and different people that have disabilities that have been really active. So they've kind of been identified based on, like he talked about at the beginning, on disability, and if they work with a group of people with a disability, or represent, for example, progressive independents. So they're mostly people that not only have a disability or work with a disability group, but they're involved with the disabilities community. And then, one of the things I really like about this organizational structure, that's a small group of people, but then by Jack adding those other areas that we all know are really important, like transportation, and housing, and technology, and getting jobs, all of those things are really important. And that's going to be an area where a number of other people will be added. And I think, I think that's great. And we'll, I think if we can figure out some way that maybe we can expand the application for those committees would be a good idea.
I was just curious how that process went, because it did sound like you've already identified who's going to be on the committee. And so I was just curious.
I think that there was a call that was put out six months ago, I think, or so, for applications. So it's been going on.
What was done after, right after?
Right after the fall.
The study was approved, since that was one of the things that the committee recommended, that that ADA transition, the committee recommended that we do a committee. So they started looking at people then.
Perfect. Thank you, Jack and Mayor Miller. Thank you.
So although not all members may be personally disabled, but most of these individuals also work for groups that represent people with disabilities, so they've got a professional role in the community as well. So they come out of organizations, represent various disability groups, but they also come out of the school systems, they come out of the veterans organizations, they come out of hospital rehabilitation organizations. So they're representing a broad section of the community also. The last thing is, we could have a member who also has a child or is a primary caregiver themselves. So matter of fact, most all of the members that we have fit all three of these categories. So it's people that are deeply, deeply committed and experienced in the area of accessibility. The committee charged, the responsibility, is that they are primarily there to serve as a resource. They are the voice of the community. These are the ears that we need in order to provide insight in terms of what's really important, what's really valued, and help to make recommendations and valuations on what is best in the interest of citizens as we discuss and evaluate a lot of different elements of our plan. They are the conduit of information back through me to you. From an organizational standpoint, we envision a very small committee, nine to eleven members. We'd like to get started as soon as possible. We'd like to have council approval by May 28th, or on May 28th, for the first meeting to actually launch off this organization in mid-June. We will be meeting quarterly thereafter. The order of business, the priorities, is the first to get organized. They will choose their own chairperson. They will conduct their own standard of definition of who they are and what they're doing. They will get deeply briefed again.
Councilmember Clark.
Thanks, Jack. My question is about the meetings. So I've noticed, and I think several councilmembers have expressed a desire to kind of overhaul our boards and commissions, maybe consolidate some, add some, change meeting times. And I paused when I saw quarterly meetings, especially when you're having subcommittees. So would the quarterly meetings be for the full committee, but then there's the subcommittees in addition? Okay. Because otherwise, it's making sure that you have enough time, because like for, just an example, our Human Rights Commission, they do a lot, yet they only meet quarterly. And I personally don't think that's enough, and would like to see that expanded. So do you feel like that would be, a quarterly meeting would be enough?
I don't know. I think it is to begin with.
Okay.
The notion is that we've got a very, very clear definition of what needs to get done under the current definition of self evaluation and transition. We're already underway. We've already got a lot of that initiative launched. So I think from a, galvanizing the focus of this committee, I think quarterly will do it.
Plus the subcommittees.
And then working through the subcommittees as well. So I think, you know, that could be changed, it could be made more frequently, but I think it also is something that we want to be manageable, so that it's not, becomes an encumbrance. I think that we could do a lot of effective work through subcommittees as well.
Good, thank you.
So that gives us flexibility.
Councilmember Hickman, and then Beerman.
Hi, Jack. Love the idea. I fully support having this committee, and appreciate all the hard work that you have done. I know you've done a lot of hard work. I just had a couple of quick questions. On these subcommittees, are they going to be comprised of members of the committee? Are will people outside of the committee also serve on the subcommittees?
Both. I think that there are a lot, there's a lot of community passion, but it's highly focused or limited to one area. Like there's a, there's a card group, people that are really, really focused on transportation, that's their primary interest. So it could be members of the committee, but my view, my estimation is, it is really going to be considered of more other members that also have participants from the committee.
So will council be appointing those subcommittee members?
No. No.
Will those subcommittee meetings be held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, like our other committees?
They will.
Who will be selecting the members of those other subcommittees?
The members of the committee, the advisory committee. We have already received several applications for various interest groups, but at least it's not, so far, been discussed with me, councilmember, about an appointment going down to the subcommittee level.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean councilmembers can't recommend people be on those.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's just that, the way that it was structured was, we will, and you all will get the, I just got the names at the end of last week, so you all will get the names that have been proposed, I guess in the next day or so, tomorrow.
Names in bio.
Yeah, you'll get those names. And then, that's what I was saying to Councilmember Scott. Then you've got all these openings on these subcommittees of other people that are really interested, for example, in housing accessibility. So there'll be room there for people. So there's nothing to preclude the council from saying, I'd like to, you know, see this person on there. It's just we weren't going to go through a formal appointment process every time somebody went on a subcommittee or came off a subcommittee.
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Jack.
So the priority, the first order of business?
You're okay. Okay.
Is, is to go through an orientation and a gelling process, go through our own set of education and communication standards, and then immediately dive into the current self inspection plan. We want to resolve access to our current facilities, as well as our programs, activities, and services throughout the, throughout the city departments. At that point, then we would move into subsequent phases to self-evaluate the remaining twenty buildings, remaining twenty parks and sidewalks. Simultaneously, within all of that, is time that that we want to consider those other interests of the, of the community, which may or may not be on the self-inspection plan, the self, the self-inspection transition plan. The self-inspection transition plan is defined by Title II under the ADA. But we have lots of, like CART, like transportation, which lies outside of the domain of the self-inspection plan. But it, it depends, demands a certain amount of attention so that it can continue to percolate and get equal opportunity. Similar to housing, housing, even though it's part of 504, part of FHA, it falls outside of our self-inspection transition plan. But obviously, and you all know, it's vitally important to citizens of the community. So we want to be able to make sure that we're paying attention to those, we're giving an equal weight to those, we're paying, we're paying a comparison of the, the idea of housing or transportation or any of these other nuclear issues relative to the priorities of the self-inspection plan. So that's kind of what our, our plan for the future is. So now, any additional questions you might have?
Councilmember Hickman.
I just wanted to give you a little bit of feedback, Jack. Again, thanks very much for your presentation. On two of these subcommittees, I just want to make a comment for you to, for us to make sure that we're, we're aware of. On the transportation subcommittee, my recollection from, presentation from Mr. O'Leary was that we're likely going to be contracting with Embark and that they have their, they have an already existing disability ADA ad hoc type committee or citizen committee. And so I just want to make sure that we're, we're being cognizant as we enter into that relationship, how this subcommittee would or would not work with the existing Embark committee, just so we don't either A, create confusion, or violate some kind of a contract provision that we may be entering into with them. If we can have one here locally, I think that's great. But at the same time, I think we just, I just wanted to make sure that we're all reading from the same sheet of music there about the transportation piece of it, at least as it relates to the public transit CART piece. There are other aspects of that, I, I understand. And then on the, the housing piece of it, I would say that there's been a lot of work done by an ad hoc group already in the community. And, and I think it would be wise to, to respect that process of work that that group has done and to consider that group, if there's going to be a subcommittee on housing, that is a group that could literally hit the ground running if, if that's what they chose to do and if that's what the city chose to do.
Well, the one thing I would say, it's a great example using transportation, for example, and that is the city can't abrogate its ADA responsibilities under contract. So even if we did have an Embark relationship, and Embark does have a requirement to conform with DOT, we have not abrogated ours. We still have, we still own that responsibility. So currently CART has its own accessibility committee. We would like that, that committee not to go away. But at the same time, we don't want that committee to take up all the room or all the space on the advisory committee. So we think that keeping a subcommittee alive, keeping the voice of transportation, transportation needs, where are the next stops, what are the next vehicle needs, alive and vibrant. And the place to do that is to continue to have an activity in the subcommittee. But the same would be true in every area. We embrace the notion, there's been so much work done by the ad hoc housing committee, we don't think we want that to go away. We want that voice to remain active and vibrant and well-recognized. I, I think at that point, it's very important for a member of that subcommittee, the voice of that subcommittee, to actually sit in this committee. So I think that that will be well-represented. And I think we are going to be very careful, we've already been very careful in selecting or recommending for selection, members that would sit at this table, the advisory table, to be well-versed, well-concerned, equally passionate about the variety of these interests in the city, but not be overwhelmed with one interest group or one stake only, so that there's a fair balance, not only on the item, transportation versus housing versus emergency management, but also from the venue of a different form of disability. We, we can't let wheelchairs run away and, and hijack kind of the concept of the interests of people with visual disabilities or hearing disabilities. We've got to have a fair, equal and passionate representation throughout the committee. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at this. We, we've got to have equity. That's the basic concept of this Civil Rights Act.
Yes, exactly. Any other questions or comments from the council? Well, I want to thank you so much, Jack, for that presentation. I think we all understand a little bit better where, where we've been and where we're going. I'm excited about this committee getting appointed, and I'm excited about the, the subcommittees because I think under your leadership, we know that we haven't had the staff really to, to raise this up to where we'd like to see it. And I think that with you, they're keeping it organized and keeping it on point. I think, I think we're, we're going to get a lot farther in the next two years. And I'm just, this is a passion of mine, and I'm really excited to see us doing what, what we're doing. I think we are, Oklahoma City has an accessibility person, I think.
Yes.
And maybe Tulsa.
Yes.
So it's time, we're the third largest city, it's time for us to have one, and we're glad you're it. And so we're ready to move forward. I know I talked to Chris a little bit about it before the meeting started. So thank you a lot. And we'll be looking forward to hearing about the activities of the committee. Okay, that brings us to the final item, which is a discussion regarding the Association of Central Oklahoma Government Surface Transportation Block Grant Program for the Oklahoma City Urbanized Area for FYE 2020, 2023, the Oklahoma City Area Regional Transportation System and Transportation Improvement Program.
Do you have someone in the audience about the ADA plan?
Okay, well, we. Okay.
Mary Francis, 850C Cardinal Creek Condos. I was just going to say, I thought that was a really great idea to create those subcommittees to, to work with the Norman ADA Committee. And I think it's really important that whenever you're talking about ADA, you include the transportation and the senior center, that all has to fit together. And, and I really appreciate the presentation that was made today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Francis. Okay, now we're going to talk about transportation. Angelo Lombardo is going to give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Right about the time I was hired in the early 90s, Congress and the President signed a new transportation funding bill that really changed how we did business here in Norman when it came to funding transportation projects. It was the Intermodal Surface Transportation Equity Act. It, it moved money that was used in the state for other programs and earmarked those funds to be used in the urban areas. And all of a sudden, we had the capacity to access millions of dollars in federal funds, which we have done successfully ever since. This is just from 2007 to 2019. The City of Norman has averaged about $6 million a year over the last 25 years, or $150 million to basically redo our transportation network. If you've been a citizen of Norman for more than 25 years, you know the significant improvements that we have seen in our, in our transportation network. We've done numerous widening projects during this time. Lindsay Street, Alameda, Main, Robinson, I mean, you pick the urban arterial, and there has been a project that we have done in Norman that has levered federal funds to, to get it completed. Just a quick map, so you can see what that looks like in a map. These are the projects that have been completed on our urban arterials over the last 25 years using these funds. The ones dash are the ones that are in the pipeline from the 2012 bond issue that remain to be done. And the ones in blue are those that affect the arterial network that are in the 2019 bond issue. You know, I didn't actually measure it, but that probably represents about half of the length of our urban arterials in Norman that we have reconstructed and widened, and will be doing that in the next few years. Few examples of what that, those federal dollars have been used for, for widening projects, you know, of course, have our beautiful West Lindsay Street project, Cedar Lane Road. There, there's also numerous intersections. And, you know, I tried to remember how many we have done. This list has 29 intersections. These projects are typically anywhere between a million and $2 million that we have done over that, that same period of time. We use these funds to build the first modern roundabout in Norman on East Main Street. We use some of those funds to help pay for the Great Separation at Robinson Street. We've replaced structurally deficient bridges in the City of Norman, a couple of examples, Constitution Street Bridges over Bishop Creek, and also the 48th Avenue Northeast, I'm sorry, Bridge over Rock Creek. We've installed new traffic signals with this money, like the one at Jenkins and Brooks. We have upgraded roadway lighting in our city, the first mile-long LED upgrade project using LED lighting on Main Street. We've replaced traffic signals that needed to be replaced, like the one at Main Street and Peters, or the one that we recently completed at Boyd Street and University Boulevard. We've done pavement marking replacement too with this, example of Brooks Street. We've done some sidewalk projects, McGee Drive, Boyd Street. And, and this is a story that a lot of people don't know about, but there is a set aside of these funds for projects defined as safety projects that the federal contribution allows us to fund 100% of the construction cost. And we've done numerous projects, about $800,000 annually over the last 25 years, or about $20 million worth of, you know, projects to do, traffic signal interconnects. We have close to 60 miles of fiber optic interconnect, interconnecting our traffic signals in the city. So how does this happen? Well, there has to be a plan on how to divvy up the funds that are made available to the region. It's a plan that's cooperatively developed by member entities of the ACOG region. It's a four-year program. It's required by federal law. You know, ACOG administers this process in, in a, in a regional transportation improvement plan as a result of that, which is submitted to the state for inclusion in the state transportation improvement plan. Every year, there's about $20 million available for cities in the metropolitan area and counties. There's a 10% set aside to cover project cost overruns. 10% of that money is set aside for the safety projects I mentioned before. 80% of construction cost is funded for the other projects with the balance. It's a competitive process. Individual projects are rated and ranked. ACOG member agencies within the Encompass 2040, that's the, the region's long-range plan, are eligible to apply. There are some rules. No single local government can receive more than 50%, 56% of the total funding, which I think Norman has almost done that on several occasions. Plan can be amended if funds are available. And although it's a multi-year plan, only the first year is locked. You know, projects listed in the second, third and fourth year of the four-year plan have to be resubmitted and, and recompete in future years. The, the timeline for this process, and, and I will say that this year was a little different, and I, I will talk about what's different this year in more detail. But typically, you know, the, the process starts in June, June to September, where the selection criteria that's used to put together the transportation improvement plan is reviewed and modified if necessary. ACOG makes, does a call for projects in early November. Then cities and counties prepare applications, submit them usually around mid-December. From late December to early January, the ACOG staff will review those applications, make sure that, that there were no mistakes made in any of the, of the number crunching that goes into the, the formulas that are used to rate and rank projects. In early January, a subcommittee of the Intermodal Technical Transportation Committee of ACOG, of which I'm a member as the city representative, will review preliminarily those recommendations. That goes to the full Intermodal Transportation Technical Committee later that month. Then the Policy Committee, Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, which Mayor Miller sits on right now, gets to review the list of projects and, and does the approval, the actual approval of the TIP. In April, ACOG submits that TIP to ODOT for inclusion in the state transportation improvement plan. That's approved by the Oklahoma Transportation Commission in September. In October the 1st, the funds become available to actually do the, the projects. The selection criteria is, is, it's a requirement of the federal government. And, and it's invoked and used when there are more, when, when, when the total cost of the projects submitted for consideration exceed the available funds. That has happened every year I've been a part of this process. So we have had to use this criteria every time. The criteria then helps the Intermodal Transportation Technical and Policy Committees to assess the regional project priorities while developing a financially reasonable program. The criteria addresses the priorities of the Federal Transportation Act, which are preservation of existing transportation facilities, relieving and preventing congestion, providing various mode of, mode choices, and increasing safety for the traveling public. And, and projects, proposed projects must be included or be consistent with the, the plan goals and the regional transportation plan, which again is called Encompass 2040. Eligible projects include widening, new construction, intersection improvements, resurfacing, reconstruction, rehabilitation, restoration of pavements, bridges, independent bicycle and pedestrian facilities, transit, park and ride, high occupancy vehicle lanes, carpool, vanpool, and safety projects. This year, something changed. And that's why we are addressing you today, to report on those changes and, and the outcome of going through the process with these changes. Several cities and counties in the region promulgated an update to the criteria. Criteria was adopted in the early 1990s and had been tweaked over the years. But as time went by, there was a sense that the way we were selecting projects for construction, for the use of the funding, was not perfectly aligned with the goals of the long-range transportation plan for the region. There was also a sense that we needed to integrate transportation system performance management into the project selection process, develop a results and efficiency-driven process with proper prioritization methodology designed to ensure that the region's transportation funding is being used in the most effective way, adjust the scoring between types of projects. In the past, there were certain types of projects by design that didn't compete as well with other types of projects. Widening projects, for instance, will always compete better than a transit project. Well, there was a sense that that inequity needed to be softened a little, and thus the need to, to revisit the criteria and allow those projects that historically had not been able to compete well to do so with the new criteria. And, and finally, some of the smaller cities that lack a professional staff requested that the, the whole process of rating and ranking projects be simplified. So those, those were the, the premises of the changes that were made to the criteria. Also, an associate was hired by ACOG to guide the process. Uh Olson and Associates was hired by ACOG to guide the process. Several members of the Intermodal Transportation Technical Committee, myself, Mr. O'Leary, participated in many of the those meetings of uh of the steering committee that was formed. The new criteria, and by the way, we actually, the city of Norman was asked by ACOG along with Midwest City, Edmund and Oklahoma City to help fund the cost of of uh Olson and Associates actually revisiting the criteria. The new criteria was finalized and accepted by both the Technical Committee and the Policy Committee and was used for the first time in the formulation of the Federal Fiscal Year twenty 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 three TIP. All ACOG member entities agreed to play by the new rules. Now, recognizing that this new criteria was going to greatly enhance the competitive of certain project types that already had their own funding sources. Transit is an example. The committee adopted a ten percent cap on the total funds that could be used during any one year for implementation of transit projects. Now, with those rules, city staff got to work like we have done over the last twenty five years. We rated and ranked a number of projects. High priority for the city were the bond projects that we still uh haven't implemented from the twenty twelve bond issue. We rated these projects, got scores, try to position the projects uh, you know, where they fit the best to give us a better, the best chance to secure federal funds. Uh and we submitted the twenty projects that that uh were allowed to submit during any four year cycle for the for the formulation of the TIP. On March fourteenth of twenty nineteen, uh the Technical Committee held a special meeting to review the scores of projects submitted by various cities and counties. Uh the selection criteria uh scoring system, we're used to develop these recommendations. And the list of selected projects was approved then by the Policy Committee last week. Uh and this is a a quick summary of the outcome, uh particularly for twenty twenty, which is the critical year, the year that's locked. So available funds for twenty twenty was almost twenty million dollars. About eighteen million dollars for the the eighty percent category of of funding, and then about two million dollars for the safety uh category of funding. Uh there were forty projects submitted by cities and counties in the region. Uh forty, I'm sorry, there were fifty eight, forty requesting eighty percent federal participation and eighteen projects requesting one hundred percent federal participation under the safety category. Uh only ten of those fifty eight projects were selected uh under the eighty uh percent federal funding category, four under the safety category. Seven of of the ten projects under the eighty percent federal category, seven are sidewalk projects. Total cost of nine point two million dollars. There's one intersection improvement project that about a half a million. Uh one uh intelligent transportation system type project that includes twenty three intersections that the city of Edmund is trying to interconnect. One transit project and four safety projects. This is how the money will be distributed by entity. Oklahoma City gets about ten point five million dollars to build seven sidewalk projects, one intersection project and two safety projects. Edmund gets one project, the ITS project with the twenty three intersections. Uh COPTA gets three quarters of a million dollars to buy, it's actually one and a half buses. Midwest City gets one safety project for eight hundred and fifty three thousand dollars and Norman gets one safety project for two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. So the big winner for twenty twenty is the city of Oklahoma City who got fifty three percent of the total funds. Most of which will be used to build sidewalks. This is how our projects fare. Remember, this is a four year program. And although we are very discouraged by what happened on twenty twenty, we are very hopeful about the remainder of of the program because in twenty twenty one, twenty two and twenty three, we're almost maxing out on our fifty six percent capacity uh to get uh federal funds for Norman. I started with this chart. I have added to this chart the last four bars. Uh you can see the bar in red is a federal fiscal year twenty twenty and our two hundred and fifty four thousand dollar project. But then you can see years two, three and four, uh which, you know, are as high as we've ever gotten in terms of the amount of federal dollars that the city anticipates getting. Now, Oklahoma City, just to to understand what happened, Oklahoma City submitted twenty twenty projects. That's a maximum they could submit. And requested that all of these projects be included in the first year of the TIP. In twenty twenty. Eleven of those projects were sidewalk standalone projects that had never been submitted before for consideration. The big losers are is everybody else. Norman and the other seven cities and one county who submitted roadway capacity, bridge replacement, resurfacing and intersection improvement projects. Obviously, the changes in project scoring criteria are negatively affecting the delivery schedule for several critical projects in Norman. None of the projects submitted in in federal fiscal year twenty twenty for consideration uh of funding in the eighty percent federal category made the final list. And of course, for us, it was Robinson Street west of I thirty five and Tecumseh Road at twenty fourth North Northwest and Flood Avenue. Without securing that money, our ability to amend the federal fiscal year twenty twenty TIP to advance the first phase of the thirty sixth Avenue Northwest Bond Project, which is what we had intended to do, is no longer an option. Uh and has delayed construction of this project by at least twelve months. So beyond twenty twenty, you know, given the local needs for Norman and the region, uh the Federal Fiscal Year twenty twenty Transportation Improvement Plan seems completely misaligned with the region's reality, which, you know, we continue to experience uh healthy annual growth that comes with higher traffic demand and congestion. And there need to be changes done to the project selection criteria. Uh this has already been agreed on by the entire Intermodal Transportation Technical Committee, the Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee and ACOG staff. And although, you know, as a representative in the Technical Committee and Mayor Miller, as a representative in the Policy Committee, had advocated to call timeout and not do what we're about to do or what we have done for fiscal uh federal fiscal year twenty twenty, we couldn't get enough people to support that. And again, there was a a sense of fairness, you know, these were the rules, everybody, Oklahoma City applied those rules and you know, nobody wanted to undo that. But we fully expect significant changes to happen when we apply for federal funds in twenty twenty one. We have advocated that we cap the bike pedestrian standalone type projects to five percent per year of the total cost. That's about a million dollars set aside for those types of projects if there are applications to do sidewalk projects. Also increasing the overall score of widening projects that increase roadway capacity, which is what the previous criteria did. So uh we're gonna look for ways to get a widening project that has multimodal elements like bike lanes or paths to compete better against a sidewalk standalone project. At the same time, we want to lower the potential score that a sidewalk standalone project or a multimodal path project can get. You know, a lot of people uh, you know, for forgot in this process that there is a source of funding to do those types of projects through the Transportation Alternatives Program. And and in fact, Oklahoma City in the last application cycle got about fifty six percent of that money to do sidewalks and bike paths in Oklahoma City. So uh, you know, it it's not that we're advocating not doing those types of projects. We have a fairly robust plan in our community to do those types of projects. And we certainly want to pursue federal funds to do those. But again, there's another source of funding that can be used for that where there's not another source of funding to widening projects. Requiring the listing of projects in excess of two million dollars specifically in the Encompass twenty forty plan, that's another recommendation we're making. And also limiting the number of projects submitted by any city or county to no more than five during any one year of the four year TIP. So in summary, you know, fourteen of the twenty projects the city of Norman submitted for consideration actually made the four year TIP. Uh that accounts for about thirty one million dollars of of the eighty two million dollars available for the four year program. It's about forty percent. Only one safety project included in federal fiscal year twenty twenty. Uh and then the the two important projects that staff had been pursuing, which is thirty sixth Avenue Northwest Phase One and the Robinson Street Project west of I thirty five, unfortunately, will be delayed by one year. So it's good news and bad news. Uh but but again, I I want to emphasize that count uh city staff feels confident that this will get corrected and will be uh in a position to secure the federal funds we need to do those important projects.
I know we have some questions and I'll get to your questions in just a minute, but I do want to make a comment about this. Uh Sean shared this with me and now it's been about six weeks or so. Um that Angelo had come back from the Technical Committee and nobody could have been more surprised. I don't know how Oklahoma City figured it out to do those sideways sidewalk projects. But everyone has admitted, I've talked to all the staff, now I've talked to most of the people on the Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee. Um and nobody saw the glitch and everybody has said, yes, we'll fix it. But we'll work on it this summer. What I tried to get, I mean, Angelo tried his very best, sent them reams of reasons why they shouldn't do this. It's still, it just doesn't seem right to me because you're supposed to be following the Encompass twenty forty plan. The sidewalks just came out of the air. They were probably on their maps projects. But somehow with the ranking that is, which was really designed to try to do more multimodal, that's really what it was designed for. It ended up having this glitch that these sidewalk projects all ranked up higher than anything else, blowing all the other cities out except Edmund, who had had that project on for four or five years. So um it was was really shocking. And then by the time I went back last week and and Stephen went with me and tried to get the the Policy Committee to postpone, uh most of the people said the same thing that Angelo said. They said, well, everybody followed the rules. We know it's wrong. It was a big mistake. We'll fix it. And so it it was just not possible to get enough enough votes to get them to postpone. The other concern is there's a very short timeline and they've got to get all this to um ODOT. So basically, what we voted on really was sending it on for public review because they have to have a public review committee. So our staff worked, I mean, just as hard as they could and you can see what they've done over the last few years and what they're going to do. But this this really is hard and I know right now people are looking at, is there any other way we can come up with the money for these projects? Okay, I'm gonna open it up and I'll be glad to talk to anybody about the whole bloody process. Okay. Councilmember Hitman.
So, of course, you probably know what I'm gonna ask about because I'm frustrated because I have two critical sidewalk projects of connectivity for accessibility in core Norman that now have gotten passed over again on Flood Street going up to Acres to where our forty million dollar library is being built, but you can't get up there right now because there's not sidewalks and sidewalks are there are not safe. And number two is going down Classen Boulevard to connect up with Lindsay where we've done a lot of work already on Lindsay to have sidewalks. But again, there's not sidewalks going from Classen up to at least the Boyd area or wherever how far we were going. While we have made investments in sidewalks from on Classen from Boyd up to Alameda, and I very much appreciate that. Uh but we don't have it fully connected and those are major arteries and thoroughfares for our residents in core Norman. And so while I hear that Oklahoma City all of a sudden came forward with ten sidewalk projects, how did their sidewalk projects beat out our sidewalk projects? That's my question.
Uh you know, I can get into the the weeds uh analyzing the criteria, but one of the factors that that's used is some of the socioeconomic characteristics of the area with the proposed sidewalk.
Much more challenged socio-economic in the areas around going from Flood Street, in my opinion. We're talking about housing from Flood Street up to Acres and I I would get guess it's not too much different also going down Classen, but maybe those are is there areas of Oklahoma City that are more challenged? I don't know.
That's the case as far as we can tell.
Okay, and I noticed.
And and I will say, council member too, that we submitted those two projects during the first year. They were in our original application.
That's what I'm saying. It's two years now. We haven't gotten the money.
Right.
So we've been waiting two years.
Right.
I just wanted to make that clear to the public that that we, you know, that I asked for these projects, funding was secured, we're waiting on federal dollars.
Right.
Uh and so, yeah, I'm frustrated because those are critical projects.
We are.
To my ward that, you know, I thought we were gonna get funded a year ago. Now we're not getting funding again this year. So I'm gonna ask this question also. I see that the Rock Creek Road widening that we are talking about having to do eminent domain from Mr. Floyd to make that project go forward, and I asked about this in the Capitol Project Meeting, has been pushed out to FY twenty three, which I assume means that we didn't get the money for that project for the upcoming year either, right?
The the way that the process works is we we would submit projects for a certain year and we base that on how ready we are to execute the project. Um you know, that particular project has been under design for a number of years now. And uh and and our capacity to deliver that project in the federal fiscal year we're applying for the funds plays into our decision to put it on that particular year. When when a project doesn't make the desired year, it's put into, it's considered then for the next year. And it has this domino effect. So where the projects end is really a function of this process, you know, where if the project doesn't make it in the desired year, it's considered the following year. If it doesn't make it, it goes to the next year and so on. Uh you know, uh six of our projects fell off the last year. They didn't make. So fourteen of our projects got placed in one of those four years.
So far, they could they could still get bumped, right?
That is correct. As I said, years two, three and four, we we get to resubmit this coming year.
Well, let me ask you this. Is there anything that we can do to improve the score of these two sidewalk projects? As I hear sometimes there are things we have to do to improve the score. Is there anything that we haven't done that can improve the score of those two sidewalk projects that we asked for two years ago?
We will look at that as part of this review process, but we obviously want our sidewalk projects to compete as well as the Oklahoma City.
Concerns. We changed this, we changed the scoring on sidewalk project, which I think is important to everybody on council. You know, we may be shooting ourselves in the foot. So I guess my question is, since you've submitted it twice, do you know whether or not there's anything we can do to improve the score of our sidewalk projects that we haven't done? And if you don't know, I understand.
No, no, I I will tell you strategically how I thought those projects would get funded. And and that that is how we constructed the sidewalk project on McGee and and on East Boyd Street. You know, you will run out of money at some point as you look at the projects and you're trying to draw the line of projects that get funded and projects that don't get funded. Uh many times, the next project up for consideration is for more federal dollars than available dollars left to be used. So you start skipping projects. And sometimes having a project that's two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, there's not that many of those. But having a two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar project allows, that becomes the best natural fit for the remaining balance. And that's how we have gotten our projects put in in the past. Thing with Oklahoma City's sidewalk projects is that they were million dollar, two million dollar projects, you know, they were huge, you know, I I don't know exactly what they're doing, uh but but you know, it's a mile, two mile long sidewalk project of, you know, one point five, two million dollars. So again, the better chance we have, it's historically has been just trying to fill the backend of that year with the remaining federal funds and having that project that is two, three hundred thousand dollars on the list that becomes a natural fit.
Well, I guess I would like the staff to consider and you know, and I want to have some conversations about taking out the Rock Creek Road project, and I believe it was about six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in the capital budget for that project. To postpone an eminent domain action against a landowner and to take those funds and fully fund these two sidewalk projects that we've been waiting on two years already for. And our best hope right now, if they don't get bumped again, is that they'll be funded in FY twenty two, another two years.
No, again, we reapply and for twenty twenty one.
Well, I'm saying right now they're projected on the FY twenty two calendar date.
Correct. That's where they landed. But you know, we will develop a list with our priorities and that's important to you. You've given us that directive that this is an important project. So we will resubmit those projects for twenty twenty one.
Well, what I'm a little irritated about also though is I asked this question at the Capitol Budget Meeting about the status of those sidewalk projects. And I didn't get a clear answer. I wasn't told what I'm being told right now tonight.
That became final uh last. That became final last Thursday, Friday, Mayor? I mean, we had hoped that the policy committee would call timeout and actually revisit this whole thing and it just didn't happen.
All right. Well, I, I want staff to consider reallocating those funds. I'd want, I'd want to hear a good, solid reason why we should spend $600, $700, $800,000 that was in the capital budget for this upcoming year on a project, on the Rock Creek project where we're having to condemn an owner's land that doesn't want it and is now pushed out to FY23 and it's competing with our own bond projects, which is what I said that night in the meeting, that are heck of a lot more important to get those, those funds for the bond projects than a project that's just a city local project. I'm not saying it's not an important project, but to me, we're watering down what should be our priority, which is securing those federal funds for those bond projects because it has a rippling effect and we just passed a bond that's going to now potentially be delayed also in the, in the federal funding portion of those projects as well as there's a rippling effect here. And so I'd rather, I think we should consider clearing some of the things off of this list and putting forward our most important projects and pressing for those to get funded as soon as possible. And to me, if that means using local dollars to fund two sidewalk projects to get off this list and taking that Rock Creek project off there, that's something we ought to give serious consideration to.
I, I think that those discussions need to be had with the whole council because there's projects in everybody's ward.
I only brought up the Rock Creek Road project, Mayor. That's in wards three and eight and I'm happy to talk to those councilmembers about it. And I know that Councilmember Carter has already had conversations with Mr. Floyd as well.
All I'm saying is that needs to be a discussion of the whole council.
Well, we're all here right now. Let's talk about it.
Well, that, that's-
You knew two years, you apparently knew about my sidewalk projects when I asked about them at the budget meeting and you told me we should wait for more federal money and I'm saying I don't want to do that.
I didn't know about your sidewalk projects. Councilmember Hickman.
And that, that decision-
Everybody has worked as hard as they possibly can.
I'm not saying nobody's not worked hard.
And I am really sorry, nobody is sicker about this than I am, except possibly Councilmember Scott and a few other people and Councilmember Castleberry. But we've all worked really hard. They'll work on it, but the decisions about the money are the entire council's decision. So, okay. Councilmember Holman.
I, I don't think I could express any more disappointment than anybody else has about this, but I was able to attend that meeting with Mayor Miller and we did make a pretty passionate plea to that board, made up of all the other ACOG represented, represented cities. And I would like to just thank representative from Moore, Edmund, Guthrie, Langston, Logan County and Cleveland County. All of those representatives did vote to support our motion to postpone, most notably being Edmund. They voted with our motion to postpone even though they're getting almost half the money in this, but they felt that it was a, you know, it wasn't fair, the way this is being done this year. So they voted with this, but unfortunately we didn't. I guess the way I understand it, a lot of the smaller towns don't get any money ever anyway, so it didn't really matter to them one way or the other. So they just deferred to OKC. Several of those smaller towns-
They're more aligned to Oklahoma City than-
Several of them are in OKC, you know, like Bethany, War Acres, the village are literally inside of OKC. So it's very unfortunate. I, I, very frustrating, very unfortunate, but I do appreciate those other cities for supporting us anyway, even though it wasn't enough. I appreciate staff and all of you for your work on this. I know Norman has benefited greatly from this, this money over the years. We, you know, in some sense, we don't have a lot of room to complain because we have done really well, but I think this new process is, in my opinion, is definitely wrong. I wish they weren't going forward with it and, because it does have a major impact on us. In my opinion, Norman has done more than any other city in the metro, maybe in the whole state when it comes to implementing multimodal complete streets. We've added more miles of bike lanes than any other city in the state, I think. This new transportation bond is going to add almost 20 new miles of bike lanes in Norman over the next 10 years. So it's just unfortunate that, you know, that they were not considering what Norman is doing, has been doing and what we're planning to continue doing, which is more than other cities. But anyway, we've been here a long time, so thank you again. We'll move on.
Councilmember Castleberry.
6th Street, Phase One is going to be delayed by one year. It's actually going to be delayed three years, right? Because it's going, on this chart, it's 2023.
You know, we cannot change the score of a project. I mean, it's, it's going to be what it is. And, and because of that, understanding that that was a priority for the city, the council, we had intended to make a mid-year amendment. We submitted a high-ranked project for the first year with the intention of doing a mid-year amendment where we would remove that project and place the 36th Avenue project. That, that was our strategy all along and we've done that before, you know, for the Franklin Road Bridge Replacement Project, that was also a project that was having some difficulty competing on its own. So we did a mid-year amendment, removed one project.
And we-
So, so that was the plan, you know? And, and councilmember, the same thing would go with, with the sidewalks. If there's an opportunity to do a mid-year amendment, in fact, we could have done that if that Tecumseh Road project, that Flood and, and, and 24th would have made it because that the cost, the federal funds for that project was higher than the 36th Avenue project that we had hoped to amend into the TIP. And the balance we could have used to do, you know, project like a sidewalk project for a couple hundred thousand dollars. So staff is always looking for opportunities to do that.
And this was finalized last Friday, right?
That is correct.
Okay, I just do, I want to appreciate that, just for public disclosure, Councilmember Scott, the mayor, and I met with you on April 26th, two Fridays ago, not this last Friday, two Fridays ago, before we kind of did the appeals process, so.
And you are correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and so I checked my calendar back there because I wasn't sure, because I knew you said, hey, this is likely, this is going to happen. You kind of gave us a heads up on this, but it's not final, so we didn't know exactly just-
Right.
You know, hoping we could pull something out.
And, and-
And I appreciate-
Mayor Miller can, can speak to this, but I sense that the last ITTC meeting, that there was enough of an uproar among policy committee members that we had a chance. And just to hear the listing of cities that voiced opposition and voted in favor of the mayor's motion, I mean, I don't know how close that was, but, but certainly there was a, a movement to try to undo this.
But also Oklahoma City has more votes than we do, so it's kind of always one of those things. One thing I do at that meeting though, we talked about, you know, Councilmember Scott, Councilmember Scott, I'm sorry. And I expressed our concern about the Robinson Street over, uh, bridge being such a high priority and we've got some TIF funds on that and why I don't like the 36th Street Northwest being delayed, I can live with it. In order to, I don't pay 20% because the federal matching is a huge dollar there. And at that point in time, we had kind of asked, do you have some funding alternatives that maybe we can do to keep this on track for next year?
I, I will let-
Have you had a chance to look at that?
Thank you, Councilmember. I was hoping Anthony could-
I know Anthony's looking into it on-
Be here to help us with that. We, we've certainly been exploring options. Excuse me, let me put it into context, maybe for other councilmembers who haven't followed the numbers, the number of the need for federal funds on the Robinson I-35 project is $4.5 million. The, the UNP TIF fund is providing the matching 1.2 million for that and that's in the bank. You have that, you've had that for a few years now. So the number we would be seeking is the 4.5 million. Frankly, there's not a lot of 4.5 millions out there in your budget. The capital fund doesn't have that kind of balance. Norman Forward dollars are pretty committed to all those projects and we don't know how to move those around. The only other option that we could conceive of was the additional UNP TIF dollars, but that of course factors into your current consideration for ending the TIF and that's way over my head, so I won't even begin to try to understand what a, an additional $4.5 million expenditure from that account would do to the current MOUs and all that process. But that's the only place we could think you could find 4.5 million in this fiscal year to, to fund the difference in that project. We've also gone to our partners with ODOT. I met yesterday with the Secretary of Transportation and our new Transportation Commissioner, Gene McCowen. By the way, if you didn't hear, he is now the Chair of the Oklahoma Transportation Commission. So we have a, an important voice in Oklahoma City and throughout the state. And we had this conversation and again, they're not willing to, the ODOT's not willing to pay that 4.5 million either for that interchange modification project. So at this point, I don't have very many great options to offer you.
Well, one thing we talked about is, and I, I don't know if legal had a chance to look at this or not, but you know, we, on the James Garner project, we think that's in Norman Forward. And we think that's going to be an ACOG submitted fund and prior to this meeting, I would have said, it's a done deal, it's going to happen now that we've got a new formula. I'm not so sure about that. But can we borrow money from Norman Forward, like 3 million, just what that is? And then when we get the James Garner money from ACOG, pay it back to the capital fund or pay it back to Norman Forward?
And I've shared that request with Mr. Francisco, that with one point to that, this is not a reimbursable program, this is a upfront program. So if you've, if you've already spent the money, you don't have the matching funds to get the federal fund. So that would be a complication under that, under that proposal. But I, I know Mr. Francisco was looking into that option and he'll maybe have more feedback for you in your upcoming budget discussions as you, as you finalize your capital fund program for FY20. But I, I have posed that question to him at your-
Because if we do that, then we're only talking about a million and a half.
Correct.
And I've got a million and a half capital projects we can come up with-
Understand.
-to do that. But I think this is a, a critical, I mean, anybody that drives that area from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock realizes it's backed up over the bridge. And that's just a, you know.
Could not agree more, Councilmember. We're as disappointed, or maybe more so than anyone here, been working on that project for years and we thought for certain that was the project that was going to be funded. Angelo didn't say it, but in, if we turn the clock back 12 months, we reported to you that the top two projects in the region in 2020, which would have been the second year of the program last year, was Robinson I-35 and Tecumseh Flood. So not only did we lose all the money to Oklahoma City, but our top two projects that were adopted last year by the policy committee that the mayor sits on became, just literally fell out of the, of the program altogether by virtue of this ranking and rating process. That's how significant this change was this year via the change in the rating system. So this is significant.
So on the, what's the, if we were to stay on schedule on the Robinson Street project, is that a two-year project? I mean, as far as construction going for your project?
Appreciate that. We've seen it as a nine to 12-month project for construction and we're, we're really ready on the project. The design is nearly complete. Land acquisition is very limited there and we're ready to start the utility relocation-
So if we were able to spread it out over two fiscal years, it would really only be $2 million per fiscal year?
If you could figure out a way to, again, you're going to let a contract for 5.5 million, you've got to have the money in the bank to-
Well, we've got, we've got the TIF money.
Right.
I mean, you just have to tell the contractor, this is the payment schedule.
Not sure you can do that, Councilmember. You've got it, when you sign a contract, you've got to have the money in your account to sign that contract and that would be in that 5, 5.5 million dollar range. Unless you want us to break the project up into two different construction phases and let two different projects, that's a possibility. A little awkward there because it is one project built in one fairly short corridor, but if, if that's what you would like staff to, to explore, we can break the project up into two and, and do two different lettings.
Well, I want staff to explore every possible way to keep this on schedule.
Appreciate that.
I think it's, I think it's, that's, that's a critical of a traffic deal. And also I know that this is the attorney is working with, on the TIF negotiations, I mean, this is an easy deal, we take $4 million out of TIF. We got, we got money there. I know it's a negotiation, it's taken away from the culture center, lifestyle center, stuff like this, but it doesn't hurt to ask. And I know you have. And so.
If I may, I want to respond to Councilman Hickman's point on the West Rock Creek Road project, just to clarify a little bit of background there. That project has been in the request from council for five or six years. So if council would like to take it off of that program, you, you can take it off just like you put it in. Two things I would, I would point out to be considered. One, you've spent about a half a million dollars already on that project for design services and land acquisition and so on. And we're also obligated for that project. That project ended up in your capital improvement program because you are obligated to finish the project that the developers have already put money in the bank to do. So this is our share of that project. It's not a, it's not a project that you can never do. I'll let you negotiate with the developers accordingly, but you've committed to build that project when you approved the Platts over the last 10 years and that's why it's in the program. It wasn't a wish list project. It's something that you have to do to obligate your, or to meet your obligations to those developments that have occurred on either side of Rock Creek. And to mention, most of the local dollars, the local match is coming from those development fees that we have in the bank right now. That's why the project is in your program despite eminent domain or all the challenges that we might face with it. But again, it wasn't a wish list project. It's something that really needs to happen because we're, you've obligated to do it.
Councilmember Scott.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you, Angelo. As you know, I'm very dismayed in the news and when you told me that Robinson and Crossroads is going to be delayed, I think the only words I was able to verbalize were no, 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 no. That's not what I said. That's what you said. So, yeah, Councilmember, I'm, I'm 100% with Councilmember Castleberry on this one and I believe your successor will feel similarly. I'm not sure if any of you have spoken with Councilmember-elect Patrone, had a chance to talk to her about it, but I think that this will be equally as important to her as far as Robinson and Crossroads and the 36th expansion goes. From what I understand, these projects have been delayed over and over. We've lost, many of us on council have lost projects that were near and dear to our hearts. So I don't think it's appropriate to blame it on anyone or to yell at you guys or at each other about it. Just need to, I would really like to look at any way possible that we can get Robinson and Crossroads done because as it was stated earlier, if you drive through there on a daily basis, you know what it's like. It's really terrible. I asked earlier for kind of a traffic report, kind of the accidents that happen in the area. Anticipate that soon enough. I wanted to ask Anthony, our finance director, some questions, kind of like Councilmember Castleberry already asked. He's kind of already vocalized everything that I wanted to say. So I feel like there should be something that we can do, whether that means, you know, ending the TIF and appropriating several or a couple million dollars of that money into the project because it must be done.
Any other comments? Councilmember Hickman.
Yeah, Angelo, Sean, I just want to say that I'm not angry at you guys. I don't blame you guys. I am frustrated, like I think a lot of other councilmembers in just hearing this tonight.
And staff too, Councilmember.
And I understand you guys are frustrated yourselves and I know you all have done a ton of work on this, just like we did on the bond and I really appreciate all of y'all's hard work. I just would like for us to think about, do we, should we reflect upon changing the strategy a little bit though, kind of like what you've even said here about reducing the number of projects that are submitted? And I guess that's kind of, you know, where I was going and the idea that instead of throwing everything out there, maybe we pick the most important things, you know? And while I understand that the Rock Creek Road project is something that we need to do because of the development, if we didn't have to do it, if we didn't have to appropriate those capital funds this year, because it doesn't look like that project's going to get funded. And if we did it in the next year, we have already seen through Oklahoma City's done that it could jump into the line wherever it would maybe normally be based on its score. It doesn't necessarily have to flow through the tier process of years and use those funds. And I'll go ahead and say it, if, if we can find other pots of money and that money could then go towards Robinson Street, I'd acquiesce to that because I agree that is a very important safety project. I'd acquiesce to that, because I agree, that is a very important safety project, and, and is very dangerous at that intersection with the, the way the bridge design is right now. But if we aren't able to secure the funds and those dollars for the Rock Creek project don't make the difference, you know, I would like for staff to consider and council to consider reallocating those funds as they've been proposed in the capital budget to those two sidewalk projects that I mentioned, so we can get those off of the list also. And I'm sure there are other smaller dollar sidewalk projects out there that council members have asked for, or, or that could be asked for and put in the queue if we think having smaller projects like that available to get funded, if there's spare money left over after other projects are funded. I'm sure there's plenty of other sidewalk projects out there that we could come up with. I just would hate for the city to be tearing up Flood Avenue, putting in sidewalks, you know, in two or three years after we open up this new central library. I know part of the discussion when we asked for this money two years ago was to try to get some of that work done at or before the time that the new library opened. Clearly, that's not going to happen now, but trying to get it done is close in time to that new library opening, since we are such, making such a large investment in that area. And you guys have done a great job of improving the sidewalks there on parts of Acres. I know that's been a part of the discussion also, was to continue to improve those sidewalks in Acres, because if people are going to be able to have access and it's be accessible to our new central library, we have to have sidewalks for them to get there. And right now, going west from the library across Acres, there are no sidewalks. Once it ends there at the library to get to Flood, and there are no sidewalks there on Flood. And so large portions of our community can't get, have a safe route to get to the library coming from the west across Acres or up Flood. And to some extent, that's why the Porter project was so important to me and the Bond project, so that you'd have improved access along Porter to then go across Acres Street coming from the east. And so, you know, I just want to reiterate, that's why those were important projects, both the Classic and the Flood sidewalk projects, and I'd like for us to explore those options. And I do, like I said, I think that the Robinson Street project is also very important.
If I could comment on one of your comments, Councilmember. You know, of course, when we are putting together our CIP, all we have is our hope for the federal funds in terms of where we put, what year we put projects and the local match for those projects. Once this was approved by the policy committee last week, we, staff has already looked at, do we need to move the local money that would match the federal dollars based on the end result of that process? And we have done that.
Are there monies that are technically freed up because we had put them in the queue for?
I believe we're going to present, I don't know, Sean, I don't want to be out of step here, but I believe we're going to present to you the availability of some funds based on the results of this process, on, on how you may want to use that to fund other projects, including your sidewalk projects.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Councilmember. Since your last capital discussion, which I think was maybe two or three weeks ago, this is all sort of played out. We were, we were watching it sort of parallel, trying to figure out what that might do. In round numbers, I think it, it, you know, you were in negative numbers on your capital fund, about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We think you are now in the positive range of two to three million by virtue of taking these dollars that were dedicated to those projects in FY twenty that we're no longer needing to spend, again, unless you advise us differently. And then now you'll have an opportunity to, to respend or spend those dollars on something else. You may choose to advocate for a project in Ward Four, sidewalk project. There might be another priority for other council members. But I think Jane Hudson and the team and Anthony are ready to bring that back to you, maybe as early as next.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And you'll have that conversation. Again, you don't have to obligate it now, you can adopt the budget with that fund balance and then work on that over coming months. But that would be an option you could do as well. The council could change the capital improvement program to add in some projects that you didn't have the option to do a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I bet we can spend that money three or four times, too. Any more questions of Angelo? I know that it was really hard for them to bring this to you all. It's been a source of real concern for nearly six weeks now, hoping that something could stop a moving train. But we were not able to do that. At the next Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, I requested, they would not let me make a motion to direct the staff to add the, the different items, the five percent cap and some of the other items, the changing of the ranking for sidewalks, and some of the things that staff had recommended. So I requested that that be, that I be allowed to make that motion. It was not on the agenda. So I requested that I can make that motion that we direct the staff. They have said they're going to start in, in this summer to redo the ranking system, but we want them to, to look at those specific things. So that will be a motion that I'll make at the next meeting. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you all, and with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.